Good evening. The hour of 7:00 PM having arrived, I will call to order this regular meeting of the Keene City Council. This meeting is being broadcast live on the City of Keene YouTube channel and Spectrum Channel 1302. The video is also streamed on the city's website and is posted by the end of the next business day barring any technical difficulties. If you would like to receive an electronic City Council packet to reference while viewing future broadcasts, please contact the city clerk's office during business hours or go to the city's website and subscribe to the city meetings email list. The agenda is also accessible from any mobile device. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Kate M. Bosley.
Here.
Laura E. Tobin.
Here.
Randy L. Filio.
Here.
Robert C. Williams.
Here.
Edward J. Haas.
Here.
Philip M. Jones.
Present.
Andrew M. Madison.
Here.
Chris E. Roberts.
Here.
Jacob R. Favaleese.
Here.
Brian J. Lake.
Here.
Catherine I. Workman.
Here.
Bettina A. Chadborn.
Here.
Thomas F. Powers.
Here.
Mitchell H. Greenwald.
Here.
I'd like to recognize that Counselor Remi has requested to be allowed to participate remotely. And Counselor Remi, we have you on the screen. Could you please state your reason for your request? Counselor Remi, are you able to hear us?
I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, there we are. If your volume can go up, that's all the best, and maybe that's internal here. Please state your reason.
I'm traveling for work. I am almost home, though, so I made a service as I get to the Harley dealership. I will drive back in as soon as I can.
Thank you very much. I think we understand your location is in transit.
I am in the car by myself.
I'd like to ask if any councilors object to Counselor Remi's remote participation this evening. Seeing none, thank you for joining us remotely. And we'll count Counselor Remi as in attendance.
Yes.
I would like to then recognize Counselor Jones. Would you please lead us in a pledge of allegiance? Everyone present.
I'd be honored. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to recognize Counselor Greenwald for a motion to adopt the minutes of our previous meeting.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move to adopt the minutes of the September 4, 2025, meeting as presented.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Bosley. I just remind everybody present tonight that because we have remote participation, all of our votes this evening will be by roll call vote. Any comments or corrections to our minutes of the September 4 meeting? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Counselor Bosley.
Yes.
Counselor Tobin.
Yes.
Counselor Remi.
Yes.
Counselor Filio.
Yes.
Counselor Williams.
Yes.
Counselor Haas.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor Madison.
Yes.
Counselor Roberts.
Yes.
Counselor Favaleese.
Yes.
Counselor Lake.
Yes.
Counselor Workman.
Yes.
Counselor Chadborn.
Yes.
Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Counselor Greenwald.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. So I'm going to move forward a communication item. And before we get to that, this is concerning social media posts by Counselor Williams, I want to thank members of the public who are present with us tonight. Thank you. I also want to point out that per our city council's rules of order, there are not public comments accepted on any items on our agenda this evening. And if there are disruptions from audience members, that will not be tolerated. If disruptions occur, I will call for order in the room. If the meeting continues to be disrupted after a second verbal warning has been given, I will ask the individual or individuals causing the interruption to leave the room. If a third warning is necessary, the meeting will be recessed while the individual is escorted out of the room. Please help us conduct our meeting tonight with efficiency and without interruption. Thank you all very much. I have submitted a letter relating to recent social media posts made by Counselor Williams to determine whether this warrants further review and potential disciplinary action pursuant to City Council Policy Resolution R. 2013-24A, which is in your packet for reference. The resolution specifies that the city council shall vote on a request for a disciplinary process at the next regularly scheduled meeting, which is tonight, after a written complaint is received by the city clerk from the mayor or a council member. So before we enter into this process, I'd like to recognize our city attorney, Amanda Palmary, to explain the process as laid out in our policy. Amanda?
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chair. As the mayor has stated, the council does have a policy that governs the disciplinary process. The city council has authority according to the City Charter, Section 28, as well as state law, RSA 49(c)(19), to remove a counselor or the mayor. The policy further-
Excuse me, Amanda. Signs must be down. Thank you. I'm sorry. No signs up. Thank you.
The city council's policy further allows for discipline short of or including removal. The policy also specifically outlines a process. It's very specific, which is very helpful. It states that the mayor or counselor may write in a complaint that will contain specific facts and reasons that may warrant discipline. Upon receiving that complaint, it is presented to the city council. The process is that the complainant, who has written the complaint, and the respondent each provide their respective positions for or against discipline. Following those presentations, a motion may be made and seconded to implement the discipline process. If there is no motion, or if there's a motion but there's no second, the matter will be closed. If there is a motion and a second, the city council may then debate and deliberate on whether to implement the discipline process. That vote does require a two-thirds roll call vote. If two-thirds of the members present vote yes, the matter would then be referred to the city council disciplinary committee. If less than two-thirds vote yes, the matter is closed. Once it is referred to the disciplinary committee, that committee is made up, as per the city council policy, of three of the three committee chairs of our standing committees plus two counselors. Those two counselors would normally have been picked by the mayor, and the case that the mayor is one of the complainants or respondents, the FOP chair will be choosing those two counselors. Just want to note also that it is the committee's role, the disciplinary committee, to then make recommendations and findings, recommendations on any discipline to impose or whether or not to impose any discipline, and that recommendation comes back before you as the full council. So just want to situate us for the question that will come before you tonight. If there is a motion and a second, it is whether to proceed in the process, not necessarily the question of what discipline to impose or how that would look at the final. That would be post-return from the committee.
Thank you, Amanda. So the, as we enter into this process, it is the responsibility of the complainant to bring forward the complaint. It is then my, as the chair of our body, to then recognize the respondent for commentary. So I will initiate the process. By suggesting that we consider if Counselor Williams' communications over social media following the murder of Charlie Kirk give rise to disciplinary action under council policy stated in Resolution 2013-24-a, which is in your packet, relating to city council disciplinary processes. By raising this question, I offer to the city council an opportunity to weigh in on public concern about comments made by Counselor Williams over social media. I have initiated this, it could have been initiated by any one of our members of the council, in a written complaint. And as described to you, it will lead to a vote, if this is on the table, of whether to proceed with the disciplinary process. The process requires an enumeration of the reasons for disciplinary action, which I will now state. On September 12, 2025, the day following the murder of Charlie Kirk, Counselor Robert Williams stated on his Facebook page that Counselor Kirk was a piece of "expletive deleted" who promoted gun violence and died by gun violence. This comment, followed by others, was offensive. His wife made her choi-- and now enter a quote, "His wife made her choice; his kids need to know," unquote. Counselor Williams' rhetoric on social media provoked the public into polarizing perspectives and was insensitive to the loss being felt by some in our community. Our policy recognizes that under Section 28 of the City Charter, actions may be deemed inappropriate or detrimental to the discharge of their official duties as elected representatives of the city of Keene, which may require removal or disciplinary measures short of suspension or removal. I respect the constitutional right of freedom of speech. I also recognize that public officials are looked upon as respected voices and leaders in our community. Mr. Williams' comments were divisive at a moment when unity is needed in our community and country, when one thing everyone in our country needs to agree upon is violence against public figures is never warranted. In conclusion of my remarks, I'd like to recognize Counselor Williams.
Thank you. I will accept any judgment that the Keene City Council has for me, and I will bear any penalty that they impose. I recognize that my words were unkind and inflammatory at a time when passions were running high, and I am sorry if what I wrote on Facebook caused any pain to those who knew and loved Charlie Kirk. It is a tragedy that two children have now lost their father. While there are aspects of the charges against me that I would challenge, they are a trifle compared to the challenge we are all facing right now as a nation. Namely, we are losing our democracy more and more every day.
Excuse me. Bradford, I ask you to not-
I'm sorry, I'm having a seizure apparently.
Yeah, apparently that's a harassing action, and I, that's the first warning. Thank you. Counselor Roberts, is there a comment? Sorry.
I find the individual's remark behind me is totally offensive for someone who-
Can you turn on your microphone, please?
I find his remark totally offensive for someone who has suffered most of his lifetime with seizures. I do not think joking about having seizures belong in this body.
I'm not joking, Fred.
Excuse me. No further comments? That's strike number two.
And what further, what makes it even worse, he turns around and says he wasn't joking, he was serious.
Is there a seat in the room? Because I'd like to ask this person to sit down.
There's a pile of chairs.
I'm happy to get up.
Mr. Hutchinson, please be seated. Mr. Hutchinson, please be seated.
I don't believe you have the authority to tell me to do something.
All right. This is, sorry. This is disruptive to our meeting. I need to ask you to leave. And I'd have to ask an officer to escort Mr. Hutchinson.
Frank, please.
Oh. Truly not necessary.
President.
I don't know where you wish to resume, but take your time.
Thank you. I believe that the death of Charlie Kirk is being used as a pretext for the undermining of the American people's right to free expression. If I was just one guy who screwed up and was facing consequences, that would be one thing. But across the country, there are hundreds of cases like mine in which people who have expressed negative sentiments about Charlie Kirk are being subjected to organized harassment campaigns of the kind that Kirk himself pioneered. This is being supported by the federal government, who are now using criticism of Charlie Kirk as grounds for deportation. People are losing their jobs, and students are getting kicked out of college. This is a concerning and frightening phenomenon, and it's one reason that I'm going to sit down and shut up for a while. But before I do, I want to remind my friends on the city council of one thing. As the leftmost member of our body, I am the canary in your coalmine. If I'm loud and annoying, that's a sign that things are going relatively well. But if I am intimidated into silence, what does that say about the danger we face? James Baldwin said, "If they come for me in the morning, they will come for you in the night." God bless us all.
Thank you, Counselor. Excuse me. All right. So noted several people in the room. That's your first warning. And I just ask the audience, there are going to be counselors expressing opinions. I will empty the chamber, and we'll go into recess, and I'll let the officers determine who remains in the room and who does not. But that kind of applause from the audience is just disruptive to our process, so please avoid that. Thank you. Okay. I'd like to recognize Counselor Greenwald.
Thank you, Your Honor. For the purpose of allowing input and discussion on the matter from the full city council, I am moving the motion as suggested by the mayor, which was brought forth at the request of numerous residents. I want to make very clear that at this time, I am not expressing my personal opinion, but feel that with the amount of public comment, and with the interest of transparency, all counselors need the opportunity to express their opinions. Can I look for a second?
Second.
And let me just clarify what I believe is the motion on the table, and please-
Yep.
Correct me if there's anything wrong here, that your motion is to ask the council to proceed with disciplinary process as outlined in Resolution R. 2013-24a?
Yes.
Okay. That is the mo-- second agrees. That is the motion on the table. And I open this up for council debate. Counselor, I see Counselor Roberts, Counselor Workman.
Your Honor, I spent 21 years in the Marine Corps. I went off to the first Gulf War. I went to a number of places that have left me pretty beaten up and everything. But we have a saying, "I may not agree with someone what someone says, but I will always defend with my life their ability to say that."
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Workman.
Quite a lot to say. I want to start by saying that it's important to recognize words do matter, especially from those of us in public office. The way we communicate can either build trust or deepen divides, and it's our responsibility to choose language that reflects respect and fosters constructive dialogue. At the same time, nobody is perfect, nor should anybody expected, nor should anyone expect, be expected to be, public figure or not. I believe our community is best served when we focus on listening, learning, and working together towards solutions that benefit everybody. With that said, I was reminded of the community response when the town of Troy's police chief attended the January 6 protest at the Capitol that turned into a riot. Many called, many were calling for his resignation, but I defended his actions at the time. The comments I made on January 9 of 2021 were just as true then as they are now. "I stand with Chief Ellis. Let's all remember, he was acting as a private citizen," this is quote, my quote and my words from then, "not his professional role. He has a right to attend a protest just like everyone else." Some might point to a Republican Party flyer promoting the protest that encouraged attendees to, quote, "put the fear of God," end quote, "into the opposition." While it's certainly dramatic language, it doesn't outward leach, encourage violence. The chief attended the protest using his earned time off, not in uniform, and took additional time off to quarantine upon returning home. We have talked a lot about, about, a lot about, in the past year, about implicit bias, but it is quite possible to have personal opinions and yet still objectively do your job. Lastly, I want to highlight several key facts I think are critical to this situation and should inform our voting tonight. These are not in any specific order and should not be mistaken as giving more validity to one than the other. The comments made were on a public page. Counselor Williams was not acting in his capacity as a counselor at the time. He did not celebrate someone's death, nor did he condone violence, figuratively or literally. His initial post included an opinion and then a fact, however unsettling that is. His additional comments were also his personal opinions. While there was and is a lot of online chatter about the issue at hand, we have only received a total of six emails from folks, five who identified themselves as Keene residents, one of which lives in my ward, and one from Hinsdale. Not one of them identified themselves as Ward 2 residents. I received not a single call or text about this matter. This is significant because Counselor Williams is a ward counselor. Much of the city was unable to vote for him. Ward 2 constituents are not the ones initiating or even supporting the request for disciplinary action. I don't like the idea of ignoring their voices, in essence silencing them, to appease what appears to be nothing more than social media fodder. Counselor Williams has not broken his oath nor acted in a way that merits disciplinary action as outlined by our charter and/or our council policies. Immorality and misconduct are not defined in our charter, city council policies, or state law, and our subjective terms. There would be no new information gleaned from an investigation by the disciplinary committee. There are no legal documents to request, witnesses or witnesses to call. The public would not have an option to speak at that, during those committee meetings. So in closing, I encourage all members of our community to join me in modeling respectful dialogue, even when disagreements arise. We need to take a moment to pause, reflect on our own actions, and be truthful with ourselves. Change starts from within. By engaging one another with civility, patience, and openness, we can ensure that difficult moments become opportunities to strengthen our shared values and move forward together.
Thank you, Counselor Workman. I see Counselor Favaleese, and then Counselor Filio, and then Counselor Haas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I apologize to you and the public. It's not my intention to look down, but this is just where I have my remarks. I'm going to read off-
If you'll speak up then to-
I'll try. I agree with Counselor Workman that we're not necessarily talking about the kind of misconduct here that is corruption or bribery or very clearly violative of a local ordinance or of a state law. But I do think that we are talking about the standards we should hold ourselves and each other to as stewards of the public trust and stewards of the public interest. We each have a responsibility around this table collectively and individually to represent this city with integrity. And the allegations in your letter, Mr. Mayor, if founded, would represent, to some extent, a failure to meet that responsibility in my mind. People experience politics through their leaders. A statement made by a political leader in the wake of an act of political violence that belittles, dismisses, even excuses or justifies that act represents, at its most generous, a lapse in judgment. In times of division and in moments of crisis, the people rightly look to their leaders to set the example, to unify, to show us a better way forward. And people are rightly disappointed when leaders instead seek to further divide and to fan the flames. A yes vote tonight is not a vote to remove Counselor Williams, who, again, to Counselor Workman's point, is a duly elected official by his constituents in Ward 2. But a yes vote is a vote to begin this disciplinary process. And so long as the council is considering the rights of a member in their personal capacity to opine on the political issues of the day and public figures, political pundits, and part- and parties—and I do think we should consider that—I think we also have to consider the responsibility of a member to conduct oneself in a manner becoming and befitting of an elected official in the sacred office that we hold. Thank you.
Counselor Filio.
Lieutenant Counselor Roberts, I also proudly served in the U.S. military. Others that we disagree with can speak, and that's the whole purpose of us serving in the military. Come back home and become civilians and everybody can speak. Originally, I was going to stand tonight. I had a couple of notes here. Want to discuss kind of the procedure and protocol. As all of you know, that you've agreed or disagreed with me over the years, and there's been a lot of both—you both know that I am a stickler for the rules of order and the charter. To me, there is no deviation. The rules are the rules, and we follow them. And you know many times at council, whether it's another counselor or the mayor or the city manager, if I have a disagreement on the rules of order of the charter, I will speak up to defend those. So first of all, the first place we go when we talk about rules and protocol is the city charter. City charter is the bible of the city council. City council does not write the charter. We have a charter committee that'll be appointed and put a charter together. It's voted on by our constituents. It has to go on a ballot. It's voted. We cannot overturn or change the charter. We are bound by the charter. There is no exception. There is no gray area. There is like—I think this—I—there is none of that. We're bound by the charter by law. We mentioned Section 28. It keeps coming up. Section 28, Section 28. You know, can we—can we do some disciplinary action? Can we do—there is not a word in Section 28 about disciplinary action, none. And there's not a gray area. It's not there. It simply just states—and this obviously is going to need some fixing when we send it to the polls—it just states, "The council with two-thirds vote can remove a counselor." That's what it says. Read it. Section 28. Okay? It's in your charter. It's the only—there's 52 sections of the charter. I've read all 52 sections three times over the last three days. I wanted to look for a gray area. There is none. Go to Section 28 and read it. And I mean that because that's what's binding us by law. Okay? So Section 28 mentions nothing about disciplinary action. It just states, "Two-thirds of a council can remove a counselor." So what does that really mean? Census really kind of doesn't really explain it too much in detail. If that was just the case, if a council got elected, 10 of us didn't like them, we could say, "You're gone. 10 votes, Section 28." Got to be careful about what you're saying here. That's Section 28. Everybody read it tomorrow. We haven't read it yet. So what happens when the charter is like a little vague, like that one is? Section 28 is very vague, even though we've talked about it. Read it. Second place, we have to go to the rules of order. The rules of order are written by us. We modify them, change them, vote on them every year. We have 39 rules of order. Read them all again today. Nothing in there, not one word about how we discipline another counselor. So then we have to go to resolutions. We're working our way down. This resolution, R. 2013-24A, was written in 2013. Ken Delane was mayor. And it talks about Section 28, saying Section 28 in the charter is pretty vague. All it basically says is, okay, if you want to remove a counselor, discipline them—it basically just says, here's where you go to do that. It's four pages. Read it. I read it three or four times the last couple of days. Once again, looking for the gray areas. Little bit more vague, but basically all it says is, if two-thirds of the council agree that a city council is derelict in their duties, you're going to send it to the committee of five city councils. So we kind of sent it to us. I didn't write it. That's basically how it is. I spoke to Mayor Lane in detail this morning about this resolution. I hope some of you did too, maybe you didn't. He was the mayor when this resolution was written. I'm not going to go over the comments that we had, but let's just say it wasn't meant for tonight. Okay? So once again, Resolution R. 2013-24A, four pages. Read it. So those are the three that we're bound by, namely the charter. We have no deviation on the charter. So basically, you know, where do we go from there? Well, if the council decides based on the resolution that you feel a council is derelict in their duties, then you can send it to the five-member board of the city council, and the five members of the city council can then decide, was a counselor derelict in their duties? Doesn't say anything about Facebook, doesn't say anything about posting, doesn't say anything about saying anything, doesn't say anything about inflammatory comments that really tick people off. Doesn't say that. It says, were they derelict in their duties as a city counselor? Read it. I'm not making this stuff up. So basically what I was going to do, I was going to kind of end it right there and just say, well, you know, make up your own minds. Then I went home one more time at 6:00 tonight and reread the charter, the rules of order, and the resolution again. Once again, did I miss something here? Well, I did. I find no wording in all three documents that allows a discipline of a city council based solely on controversial comments, whether verbally or through social media. Speaking of social media, we're going to have to get the rules of order on that too because there's nothing in there about social media. There is nothing in all three documents about a city council making a comment, no matter how inflammatory or who they ticked off or who—how bad it was. To be clear, I did not agree with Counselor Williams' comments at all, not in the slightest. And he will tell you, I said in no uncertain terms, how ticked off it was about those comments and how we're dragged into it now. I'm not a happy camper about that, and he knows that. But with that said, I go back to the charter, the rules of order, the legislation, the resolutions. Show me where it says we discipline a counselor for the words. Show me tonight because I want to see where it says we can discipline a city counselor based on words or something that was said on social media. I challenge the 14 of you to find that. We are a city council bound by laws and rules. We have the charter, we have the rules of order, we have a resolution. Those are our laws we were bound by. If we violate them, then we should be held accountable. Hence the word violate them. Not the gray area, not maybe you did, maybe you said a word I disagree with. Did you violate those three documents? There is no gray area in those documents. Either you violate the charter, the rules of order, or you didn't. So after rereading it multiple times, you know, the laws and rules that bind us. And those are the laws and rules that bind us. Not social media, not rumor, not mob mentality, not pressure. Law, rules. With those read and those laws and rules that bind us, I absolutely can find no clear, indisputable violation of those rules by Counselor Williams, whether I disagree with them or agree with them, and I can tell you right now, I disagreed with him. So I cannot vote for any further action against him based on the facts of law. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Haas.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. Build a little bit on what Counselor Workman said, the number of direct letters or appeals, phone calls that we've received. I've received some direct emails. That's about it. Just a few handful. I did look at the petition that was online, just to see what was stated and all, and you can—you could, back on Sunday or Monday when I looked at it, see all the names that were signed to it. So at that time, there were about 1,060 names on this petition, this online petition. I think the site was iPetition. There's other petition sites. I didn't look at the others. And of the 1,060, I was able to pull it down and play with it in a spreadsheet a bit. About 200, 250 of them didn't have last names appended to them. So that was one cut. Then I looked further and, you know, far be—I'm relatively new in town. I don't know everybody in town, but I know a decent amount of people. I found 11 names that I knew that were in the city, and I didn't recognize any of the others. But that's just me, and certainly there would be more in there. But online petitions don't have a much motivation for us. Counselor Filio mentioned about gray areas. There is gray area, and that's where judgment comes in, and that's where we're acting today. We have to judge in this space here what we're talking about. Does it fall into, you know, moral turpitude or abrogation of duties as a leader or things like that? Those are the gray areas that we're measuring here, and that's what we're going to vote on to decide. As for myself, I'm—a right to speech, wherever it is, is the most sacred right. It is the most absolute one. Barring direct threats, barring direct threats, I'll leave it at that. We should be able to say whatever we want without fear of persecution. We can get, you know, lambasted in social media and in the press and in letters and from our neighbors and our friends and our relatives, as many of us do, but we should still not suffer professionally or especially as elected officials from what we say. Thank you.
If there are no other comments, we can proceed to a vote, but I'm not going to do that prematurely.
Mr. Mayor, I was just able to connect back again. I finally got home and it allowed me back in. I missed your speech as well, your component as well as Counselor Williams. I'm comfortable voting, but I want to put it to the council on whether I should recuse not having heard those two pieces.
A recusal needs to be authorized by the council. I'll turn to the city attorney.
Thank you. To be able to not participate in a vote, it would have to be a conflict of interest rather than what I think you're presenting, and if it were on that basis, the council would have to vote for it. Otherwise, the policy does require that all members present do vote.
Sorry with that interpretation, Counselor Remy. I think you are bound to a vote.
Understood.
Unless we lose you again.
I've got internet now, so.
Okay, very good. I see no further comments. I would like then to call on the clerk to read the roll, just to reaffirm. A yes vote here leads to a formation of a disciplinary committee. A no vote of six votes, meaning failing to get two-thirds, would end the conversation this evening with the decision not to proceed with the disciplinary hearing or forming a disciplinary committee. So, is that all clear? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Counselor Bosley.
Yes.
Counselor Tobin.
No.
Counselor Remy.
Yes.
Counselor Filio.
No.
Counselor Williams.
No.
Counselor Haas.
No.
Counselor Jones.
No.
Counselor Madison.
No.
Counselor Roberts.
No.
Counselor Favalese.
Yes.
Counselor Lake.
No.
Counselor Workman.
No.
Counselor Chadbourne.
No.
Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Counselor Greenwald.
No.
The motion fails. The vote was four yes, 11 no. That concludes our discussion on my communication to the council. We will proceed with our meeting. I actually allow us a five-minute recess here should there be people who wish to depart. All right, I'm going to start with announcements that I avoided at the beginning of the meeting. So let me start with some good news. The mayor's youth council at Keene High School—moving to something far less severe. So we convened last week. We are now in our second year. There are 27 students at the high school that have signed up for the group. Counselor Bosley?
So I saw this, and I'm really excited for this program that you are running at the high school. I now have a high schooler who is interested in joining. What—how do they join up?
Yeah, I think if they go to the principal's office and ask for Ginny—Ginny— I'll get you the name. And—I—let's see. Actually, we're shy at some 10th graders, so this could be good for the group and for him. be good for the group and for him. They, they are taking on a question about should the city be, offer a Native American commemoration in Native American Month in November. So, it would be a program designed by them. It would be a first in, in our city. It might just be because it would be in the month of November, having been separated from Indigenous Peoples' Day in the second, on the second Monday in October. It would be, it might be the first in the state. So, anyway, it will be their program. I can't give you any more insight than that. Reminder about municipal elections. The, they are scheduled, primary election, October 7. The polls will be open from 8 until 7:00 PM. And please direct any questions regarding voting, getting registered, about the election. Refer those individuals to the city clerk's office, please. Following that, the general election is scheduled for November 4 with the same poll hours, 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Upcoming events that are happening around our city. This weekend, on Friday and Saturday, Counselor Madison called my attention and reminded me, because I knew of this, that Friday and Saturday is the river cleanup. I think it's from, from river to the sea kind of thing. And this is being convened at both Ash Willet River Park at 9:00 AM and runs for two hours till 11:00 AM. It's also being convened at Beaver Brook at the place where it abuts Pat Russell Park. And the public is invited to participate. As are counselors. Put on your hip waiters and dive right in.
Thank you, Your Honor. It's the annual Source to Sea cleanup. You guys have heard me talk about it just about every time this, I'm here. The water's low, so we should be able to get out a decent amount of trash. It's hosted by the Connecticut River Conservancy and then locally by the Cheshire County Conservation District and the Ash Willet River Local Advisory Committee. Tomorrow, from 9 till about 10, 11 o'clock, folks will be meeting at the Ash Willet River Park over on West Street to begin pulling trash out of the river there. Saturday morning, I will be on Beaver Brook at Pat Russell Park where it meets, where the river, where Beaver Brook meets Water Street at that bridge. I will have extra waiters if anyone wants to borrow money, but you really won't need any, because it's only a couple inches deep and you can get dirty and help me pull stuff out of the river. So, if you're interested, please come by. Every year, we pull out about a ton of trash from our local waterways, so it's a great opportunity to get out, meet people, and see some pretty interesting trash. Feel free to pack with me.
How many shops in town?
We'll see. The record's five. So, we'll see if we can beat it this year.
Thank you, Counselor. Proceeding on with subsequent weeks, this week end and through this week is Pride Festival. I'll address that later. But it concludes on Sunday with events downtown Keene running from noon until 7:00. The following weekend, the Keene International Festival is being held on September 27, Saturday, from 11:00 to 3:00 PM at the Keene Parks and Recreation Center on Washington Street. And the following day, we hold the Clarence Damar Marathon. That is by entry, but it concludes at the Keene State College campus on Appian Way on Sunday, September 28. There's even a senior run and walk that initiates itself. And please contact the, the website for Clarence Damar Marathon if you have interest with a child or a senior or in running the event. Either the half or the full marathon. Okay, that concludes that. I also want to call to your attention, and I'm going to read this for the public, a proclamation that you had requested the mayor to write. And this proclamation, I'll just dive right in. Whereas Keene Pride and the City of Keene share a goal of creating an environment where everyone, regardless of their sexual orientation or gender identity, can feel safe and valued. And whereas, the city council has charged the mayor with issuing a proclamation which identifies common elements of what it means for Keene to be a welcoming and inclusive city that promotes unity, pledges support for marginalized groups, and condemns acts of racism, hatred, bigotry, and oppression in our city. In whereas, thousands of years ago, loved thy neighbor as thyself, guided people to offer, to, to offer others the same degree of compassion, care, and respect they desire for themselves. And whereas, as we approach the 250th year celebration of our nation's Declaration of Independence, we recall how it assigns to people certain unalienable rights that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And whereas, the public observes a hostile environment towards people identifying as LGBTQ+, where state law prohibits implicit bias training, where federal rhetoric places restrictions on LGBTQ+ military service and healthcare access, and when LGBTQ+ students face shaming, loss of privileges, and prohibitions on books and classroom discussions. And whereas, individually, we can choose to differ on matters of national and state policy and legislation, but as a city, we act without partisan labels to ensure that within our city's borders, all are treated consistently, fairly, and with justice for all. And whereas, as leaders in Keene, we share an obligation to create safe spaces where people can express the fears they have for themselves and others, and where we can learn from each other's lived experiences. And whereas, the City of Keene is dedicated to building a community where all individuals feel safe and respected, where people feel a sense of belonging, where everyone can envision a future for themselves and their families, free from fear or, of intimidation or harassment. Now, therefore, I, J. Con as mayor, do proclaim September 14 through 21, 2025, as Pride Week in Keene as an expression of our community's support for our LGBTQ+ residents. And I, I hope that this fulfills my charge and does so with the pleasure of the council. Thank you. Thank you. I will say, this coincides with Constitution Week. I issued a proclamation earlier in the week that is running from Wednesday, the 17th, until September 23. That was delivered to the Daughters of the American Revolution. Okay, that, yes, Counselor Greenwald?
One more announcement. Whereas, on September 24, JV Con entered the world, and we're here to celebrate his birthday. Not going to do a whole, and therefore, but therefore, here's some cupcakes.
Yay. Break them out. Thank you very much.
Enough to share?
And on that night, Chris Heron, a former Boston Celtic basketball player, is going to be at Keene State College talking about his battles with addiction and recovery. And that is open, begins at 7:00 o'clock. So, Counselor Greenwald, there's a challenge. Can you conclude your meeting by 6:55?
No problem.
Okay, moving right along. We are now going to move to our council. Oh, I'm sorry. We have other communications that are in your packet. One is from Ken Cost in opposition to the sale of city property. I guess I should turn to you to announce what that is.
Thank you, Mayor. We have a communication from Ken Cost in opposition to the sale of city property on 100 Church Street.
And we'll file that as informational and be taken up later in the meeting. Next, we have another communication.
Next communication is from Mark Rebillard of the Keene Downtown Group, who is requesting to conduct a series of small-scale festivals in participation or partnership with Colony Theater to be held downtown during the various phases of the downtown reconstruction project.
And we'll refer that to Planning Licenses and Development Committee. Now, we will move on to committee reports. D1.
Our first committee report is a municipal facilities, services, and infrastructure, excuse me, Municipal Services, Facilities, and Infrastructure Committee report relative to the request to remove a tree on city property at the westerly edge of 9 Evergreen Avenue. On a vote of four to one, the Municipal Services, Facilities, and Infrastructure Committee recommends granting Howard Mudge's request to remove the tree in front of 9 Evergreen Avenue at Mr. Mudge's expense, conditional on the planting of a replacement tree to be maintained by the city.
I'd like to recognize Counselor Greenwald for a motion.
Thank you, Your Honor. Moved to carry out the intent of the committee report.
Seconded by Counselor Filio. Counselor Greenwald?
Thank you, Your Honor. So, Mr. Mudge has this tree that he feels is unsafe and doesn't want. Public Works Department went over, looked at it, didn't really agree, but the policy is that if an abuser wants a tree on city property removed, it can be done, but at their own expense, which is what we are recommending, and also that that tree be replaced with a suitable tree to grow back.
Further conversation, discussion from the council? Counselor Tobin?
Sorry. I did vote in opposition just because the, what was said in the letter did not seem to reflect what we were hearing from Public Works. And he wasn't here to give any feedback or to respond to that. I would have liked to know what the problem was. If it was just for aesthetic reasons, I think I would have liked to actually just hear that in the letter, and that was the reason I voted in opposition.
Okay. Thank you. Any further conversation? Seeing none, I'll, would you call it all? Sorry.
Yes, sir. Counselor Bosley?
Yes.
Counselor Tobin?
Yes.
Counselor Remy?
Yes.
Counselor Filio?
Yes.
Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Madison?
Yes.
Counselor Roberts?
Yes.
Counselor Favaleese?
Yes.
Counselor Lake?
Yes.
Counselor Workman?
Yes.
Counselor Chadbourne?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item D2.
Item D2, a Municipal Services and Facilities, Municipal Services Facilities and Infrastructure Committee report relative to the request to install a sculpture at Patricia Russell Park. On a vote of five to zero, the Municipal Services, Facilities, and Infrastructure Committee recommends the city manager be authorized to do all things necessary to accept and install the proposed public art piece by Frederick McMillan to be placed at the Ash Willet Park, and to negotiate and execute a memorandum of understanding with the donor to include the requirement for certificates of insurance in accordance with Resolution R. 2018-22.
Counselor Greenwald for the motion.
Thank you, Your Honor. Moved to carry out the intent of the committee report.
Seconded by Counselor Filio. Counselor Greenwald?
Thank you. So, this statue came to us from the Friends of Public Art and Frederick McMillan. The sculptor is someone named Christopher Curtis. Clarification and a correction, this is not a gift. It's a loan because it is for sale, and it's there for display. It may be there for 10 years, may be there for 10 minutes, but they are going to install it at their, at their expense. Originally, it was going to the Patricia Russell Park. There was some concern that that's a youth area, and it might be toppled or damaged or something. I don't know if you can see it. It's like eight feet tall, looks like about a foot thick. And to me, it's a challenge to knock it over for young kids. But I also see that it's bolted to the ground, and Public Works assures us that structural engineers said it's safe, it's not going to fall over. Nonetheless, I think moving it as a location to the Ash Willet River Park is probably a safer thing. This is not a slam against the Patricia Russell Park in War II. I just want to make that clear because I did get more than a few calls saying, what do you mean, we're not good enough for art? That's not the case, in my mind, anyway. It was about safety. And putting it at the Ash Willet River Park is good. I hope we can come up with some other statues or whatnot for the Patricia Park. And hopefully, you will agree, and we can get this thing erected because it does look interesting. Thank you.
Any comments, questions from the council? Seeing none, would the clerk call the roll?
Counselor Bosley?
Yes.
Counselor Tobin?
Yes.
Counselor Remy?
Yes.
Counselor Filio?
Yes.
Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Counselor Haas?
No.
Counselor Jones?
No.
Counselor Madison?
Yes.
Counselor Roberts?
Yes.
Counselor Favaleese?
Yes.
Counselor Lake?
Yes.
Counselor Workman?
Yes.
Counselor Chadbourne?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Greenwald?
Yes.
Motion carries with one objection, one negative vote. Excuse me. So, 14, I'm sorry, did we get the Counselor Remy in there?
Yes, we did.
Okay. 14 to one. Thank you. Okay, moving on to D4. Sorry, D3.
D3, an MSFI committee report relative to Counselor Haas' request for a historical marker of Keene Bottle Works. On a vote of five to zero, the MSFI committee recommends that the Yankee Bottle Club be authorized to design, fabricate, and donate a historical marker for installation on the Cheshire Rail Trail, and that the city manager be authorized to take all actions necessary to facilitate its installation.
Counselor Greenwald for a motion.
Moved to carry out the intent of the committee report.
Seconded. Seconded by Counselor Filio. Counselor Greenwald?
Someone named Edward Haas, I think he's a city counselor, who just voted no on something, 14 to one, came to us with a request to put up a sign honoring the, the glass industry and the bottles on the rail trail. And I think it's a great idea, but I also want you to consider the source.
Counselor Haas?
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, I guess I flirt with disaster here, having voted against a sculpture, which was supposed to go to Pat Russell Park for reasons unstated that it went over to Ash Willet.
All right, I'm going to, I'm going to ask that we, one, don't use personal names as we're addressing the topic on the agenda, and two, that we state that the.
Sorry, I'm, I'm here, I'm speaking of the Yankee Bottle Club. They're a club that's been around here since 1968, I think. And we have a sign that talks about the bottle works in the city, but the sign's at the rec center, and the bottle works was down on a rail trail. So, the club wants to have a sign at the actual location of where the bottle works was. And, and we have Alan Rumroll as part of this club. He's a big advocate. He wrote the text that we'll use for the sign, and we'll get on with designing it. So, I hope you'll overlook my prior negative vote and vote yes for this. I would also add that Yankee Bottle Club is putting on their annual bottle show at Keene High School on October 12 from 9 to 2:00 PM. So, go look at all those old bottles, and you may recognize some.
Thank you. Counselor Madison?
Thank you, Your Honor. This, this sounds really great, and I never knew that the, the bottle factory was at that location. A great way to really immerse yourselves in the bottle history is to come to Beaver Brook Saturday at 9:00 AM and help clean up the stream by it, because, oh, you laugh, but like, it's actually full of old bottles. I probably pull out a dozen or more a year. So, come to the River cleanup. Sorry for hijacking.
Loosely, loosely connected to the topic. Thank you very much. Okay, any further relevant comments? Seeing none, would the clerk call the roll?
Counselor Bosley?
Until Counselor Madison spoke, I was going to vote no, but I think I'll vote yes.
Counselor Tobin?
Yes.
Counselor Remy?
Yes.
Counselor Filio?
Yes.
Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Madison?
Yes.
Counselor Roberts?
Yes.
Counselor Favaleese?
Yes.
Counselor Lake?
Yes.
Counselor Workman?
Yes.
Counselor Chadbourne?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Greenwald?
Yes.
Motion carries without objection.
Next, we have an MSFI committee report relative to sale of city property at 100 Church Street. On a vote of four to one, the MSFI committee recommends the city manager On a vote of four to one, the MSFI committee recommends the city manager be authorized to do all things necessary to negotiate and execute the sale of 100 Church Street, parcel number 574-015.
Counselor Greenwald for a motion.
Moved to carry out the intent of the committee report.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Filio. Welcome, Counselor Remy. Yeah, he's got a unique bottle.
Okay, this is regarding 100 Church Street. This is a small grass area at the end of Church Street, which has gone through Finance Committee, which recommended selling it. MSFI heard it and discussed it, and the vote was four to one. However, since then, there's been a lot of conversation about neighbors and, you know, people basically in the Church Street, Roxbury Street, Water Street area, expressing some interest in partnering with the city to maintain it. This is not time-sensitive, that it doesn't have to be sold for any particular rush. I assume that the abutter that is interested in it will still be interested, so I would like to move for this be an amendment?
Yes.
To refer it back to committee to give the neighbors one more shot at working out some arrangement with the city to let the city retain ownership, do some of the maintenance, and the neighbors do the remainder.
Second. That is your amendment?
Yes.
To refer this back to the committee?
Yes.
Counselor Lake?
Thank you, Your Honor. Clarification from the motion maker. Which committee?
MSFI.
It's been to MSFI.
Yeah. No, I came from, okay, I think that's been clarified. Counselor Filio?
Yes, I agree with Counselor Greenwald. Been notified by a lot of people from their neighborhood that are expressing some kind of an interest, not sure why, but they're expressing interest, and whereas this is not all that time-sensitive, even though I do feel the city at some point needs to either sell the park or come up with a better situation there, I agree to send it back to committee and we can take another look at it. Thank you.
Counselor Roberts?
I wholeheartedly support it going back to committee. Since I heard about this, I usually go out about 5:30, 6 o'clock every morning and walking, and I have not seen any trash or anything on that piece of property. If you want to really worry about it, go down the rail trail. Yesterday, there were seventeen people out there. One was sleeping in the bushes right by the hotel. Trash all over the place. There's a couple of needles there. I saw another person washing down with little pads to take the little shower and just throw them on the ground. So, I think this is a very low priority for the city to get rid of, and I think it's really important that we work out some type of partnership.
Counselor Favaleese?
Thank you, Mr. Mary. I'll vote to send this to committee for a third time and allow the conversation to continue. I agree with Counselor Filio, at some point, it's got to reach a terminus. I will also say, you know, I agree to some extent that it's not time-sensitive in that the abutter, you know, will likely still be interested. I do have constituents that live in the properties owned by the abutter that probably feel it is a little bit more time-sensitive than some of us around this table do, because they are there not just in the morning, not just during the day when folks are walking by, but there at night when some of these problematic activities are happening. Much like Counselor Filio, I was on a ride along with KPD recently, and I asked about this property, was this property known to the police department? And wouldn't you know it, it was well-known to the police department, and officers expressed challenges because it's a public space and effectively trespassing people from that space. So, if there's a real plan coming to, you know, partner with a neighborhood group, partner with sort of stewardship group, and avoid a sale of this, then I'm willing to hear it out, because I would like ideally to preserve this as a green space. But I just, I think it's important that the perspectives of the folks that live in the abutting properties is representative of this discussion. Thank you.
So, the amendment on the floor is to refer this back to MSFI. If there are no further comments, we can now do a hand vote to, on the amendment.
Thank you, Michael.
All those in favor of amending this? It looks like a unanimous vote. Counselor Jones, yes?
I will, yes.
Just checking. Okay, that is a unanimous vote. We are back to the main motion. Sorry.
May I get a clarification about who made the second?
On the amendment, Counselor Bosley? Yeah. Okay, back to the main motion. Any further conversation on the amended motion to refer back to MSFI? Counselor Jones?
No.
That was, you're ready to vote?
Yes.
All those in favor? And that looks like it's unanimous vote. Thank you very much. Moving on to D five. Installation of a trail on.
D five.
Trail sign.
Thank you, sir. An MSFI committee report relative to the installation of trail sign identifying the Charles Redfern Bridge, BPPAC Committee. On a vote of five to zero, the MSFI Committee recommends approval of the attached design for trail signs identifying the newly-named Charles Redfern Bridge, formerly South Bridge, spanning New Hampshire State 101, and that the city manager be authorized to do all things necessary to install the signage on the rail trail.
Counselor Greenwald for a motion.
Thank you. Moved to carry out the intent of the committee report.
Second.
And if I just might, before I recognize you, Counselor Greenwald, that the acronym there of BPPAC is the Bicycle Pedestrian Path Advisory Committee, which brought forth that recommendation. Counselor Greenwald for the committee.
Okay. What this would accomplish is putting up the sign, which would be honoring Chuck Redfern for his work on the rail trail, calling the Charles Redfern Bridge, which is what it's named. This is the sign, and this is approximately the style of what would be other signs along there. So, the MSFI Committee recommends approval.
Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Your Honor. I want to thank the BIPEC for presenting this to, for presenting this sign to the MSFI Committee, who brought it to us. This originally came out of BIPEC, and thank you, Counselors, for showing us the sign. BIPEC was designed, it was actually designed on a napkin over breakfast at a BIPEC, by some BIPEC members. And if you notice at the top where it says, "Welcome to the," it's on a curve which mimics the curve of the bridge. And just to go on with the wording, Charles, "Welcome to the Charles Redfern Bridge honoring the man with the vision and tenacity to create the magnificent multi-use trail system here in Keene, New Hampshire." Danny Mitchell on the morning TV radio, morning TV radio, morning radio said, "It's probably the only sign in New Hampshire that has the word 'tenacity' in it," but it's well-deserved with Chuck Redfern, and thank you to the MSFI for approving this.
Thank you. Counselor Haas?
Thank you, Your Honor. The intention from Bicycle Pedestrian Committee, and I believe from other people, was that this sign goes on both ends of the bridge, on the rail trail. This isn't on the roadway, it's on an highway, it's on the rail trail. I just wanted to confirm that it is to go on both sides of the bridge. Does anybody know?
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's been answered by the manager. Hope everyone heard that. It was affirmative. Counselor Roberts?
I was talking to Chuck a couple of weeks ago, and I was just kidding, he said, "This is one of the few times we in the state have named something after someone who's alive." So, he gets to actually enjoy and be proud of it, and he is extremely proud of this honor.
Thank you, Counselor. Seeing no further comment with the clerk? No. All opposed in favor of the sign on both ends of the bridge. And that motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, and congratulations, Chuck. I'm sure we will have a ceremony honoring the placement of that in your service to the city. Next, D six.
Thank you. An informational report from the MSFI Committee relative to downtown infrastructure project suggested bike lane rules. Bike Pass Committee?
This is recommended to be accepted as informational, and so it shall be filed as informational report. I will add that there's a topic on this later in the agenda that will refer this through a resolution. Moving on to D seven.
D seven, a PLD Committee report relative to Kiwanis Club of Keene requests to use city property for the annual tree lighting ceremony. On a vote of four to zero, Planning Licenses and Development Committee recommends the Keene Kiwanis Club be granted permission to use downtown city rights of way on Friday, November 28th, 2025, to conduct the annual tree lighting festival, conditional upon the following. The furnishing of a certificate of liability insurance in the amount of $1 million, naming the city Keene as additionally insured. The signing of the standard revocable license and indemnification agreement. That the petitioner agrees to absorb the costs of any city services over and above the amount of city funding allocated to the event, and agrees to remit said payment within thirty days of the date of invoicing. That the agreed-upon footprint and layout for the event shall encumber Central Square, including the traveled portion of the road, requiring the following road closures. Central Square, Rest Street at Central Square, Roxbury Street from west of the Hana Grimes parking lot to Central Square, Washington Street from Vernon Street to Central Square, and Cord Street from Winter Street to Central Square. That the actual event will be held from 5:00 P.M. to 8:00 P.M., with the times for setup and cleanup to be established with city staff. That free parking be granted under the provisions of the free parking policy for the following use of spaces with dates and times and locations to be determined in coordination with the Parking Division for volunteer parking during pre-event setup and post-event breakdown activities, and spaces within the event footprint on the day of the event. Said permission is granted subject to attainment of any necessary licenses or permits, and compliance with our laws, and compliance with any recommendations of city staff.
Counselor Bosley for a motion.
Moved to carry out the intent of the committee report.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Jones. Counselor Bosley for the committee.
There's not a lot left to say after that motion, except this is an annual request. This is an event that we are really excited to see come back before PLD, and the community really enjoys this. The petitioner outlined the series of things that would be happening, including the book reading, and the tree lighting, and the, and our Santa showing up to greet all the children, and this is something that the community has been really happy to have, and we're happy to have it here and be part of it, and the committee recommended it unanimously.
Any further comments on this motion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Carry out the intent. Moving on to D nine.
D eight.
Sorry, I just wanted to, oh, yes.
A planning, excuse me, a PLD Committee report relative to authorization to enter mutual aid agreement with the town of Marlborough for building inspection and code enforcement services. On a vote of four to zero, the PLD Committee recommends the city manager be authorized to do all things necessary to enter into the mutual aid agreement with the town of Marlborough.
Counselor Bosley?
Moved to carry out the intent of the committee report.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Jones. Counselor Bosley?
So, this came before the committee because there was, the town of Marlborough has a conflict in reviewing a project, and during that conversation, there was a request to enter into an agreement with the city of Keene to help out with some of their code enforcement requirements. The question came up, does Marlborough have its own code enforcement officers, and they do, but they are part-time, and so this is something that the city is open to helping them with. The manager did assure us that this will be at no cost to the Keene taxpayer, and that we will charge a fee that's associated with the work that we'll be providing, and that we will have an out clause. So, if this doesn't become beneficial to the city, that we would give our notice and go back to our standard operating. So, we didn't see any harm here in helping them out in this capacity, and we voted unanimously to move forward.
Any further comments, questions? Sorry, any further comments or questions from the council? Seeing none. All those in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to D ten. I hope it's D ten. No, it's not D ten. Moving on to D nine.
An FOP Committee report relative to acceptance of donation for Maker Space Staffing. On a vote of four to zero, the FOP Committee recommends the city manager be authorized to do all things necessary to accept and expend a donation of $15,000 from the Friends of the Keene Public Library to fund Maker Space Staffing.
Counselor Powers for the motion.
Thank you, Your Honor. Moved to carry out the intent of the committee report.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Remy. Counselor Powers?
And before we get into the discussion, I will move to amend the committee report to correct the amount of the donation to $18,000. Second.
I guess the amendment is seconded by Counselor Remy. Counselor Greenwald?
You got it.
Thank you. Didn't see that. Making my own note. I assume that we can proceed with a vote on the amendment. All those in favor of amending the motion? Counselor Williams? Vote in favor, is your vote in favor of amending the motion? Okay, so that is the unanimous vote, and we move on to the main motion.
Thank you, Your Honor. Those who don't make it to FOP meetings, sometimes it's very educational. I mean, it's pretty boring otherwise, but we had a presentation by the Keene Public Library the other night. It was, it was very informative, very interesting, and most people don't know, unless, I guess, from my perspective, once you've got kids, you don't know some of the things that are going on, that can affect every one of us. We can go in there, and we can do some engraving, make some things, just fantastic, and remember the staff had a display of items, fabulous. So, we should thank twice the Friends of the Public Library for this donation, because what it does is it covers the staff member, staff member's time to run this part of the program at the library. They have somebody there between eighteen and twenty hours a week funded through the program as a result of these donations. The products they use to make these items there are donated from another source, and all year long, things like this happen at the library. I hope you approve it.
Counselor Favaleese?
Thank you, Mr. Mary. Did have the pleasure of attending that particular FOP meeting. I want to just add, in addition to the staff members that Counselor Powers talked about, this Maker Space program is also run with a lot of help from interns, oftentimes from Keen State College. So, this is not just an opportunity to support the community as it is, but it's also an opportunity for us to continue building the kinds of relationships that we want to, I think, with our, our leading institute of higher education in the city.
Thank you. Good partnership. Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of carrying out the intent? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. D ten.
An FOP report relative to the acceptance of New Hampshire Juvenile Court Diversion Network funding. On a vote of four to zero, the FOP Committee recommends the city manager be authorized to do all things necessary to accept and expend funds provided by New Hampshire Juvenile Court Diversion Network for Youth Services Program.
And recognize Counselor Powers for a motion.
Thank you, Your Honor. Moved to carry out the intent of the committee report.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Remy. Counselor Powers for the committee.
Thank you, Your Honor. Annually, we receive funding through the state, through various programs at the state level, to trickle down to us so that we're able to provide a number of services to youth who may have a bit of a problem, or a little bit on the edge of the law, and rather than have some enforcement action, we can provide some ability to them to correct the way they do business. Over time, this program has expanded from, it arose way back. Over time, this program has expanded from, it raises way back, I remember way back, that, you know, we said, well, it comes out of the district court. Well, at the present time, we now help out the entire county youth, and that was the most, in my opinion, it was the most important thing, really didn't care where they came from. They needed some help, and we're here to do it. The work that's done by the members of the staff is fabulous, they're able to deal with a number of cases. It's grown over 80 youth that may be qualifying for this particular product program and have been served, and we will continue to serve some way, but it's very helpful that the state has been good enough to increase the amounts of money that's coming to the city of Keene. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments on the funding? Seeing none, all those in favor? This motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to item D eleven.
An FOP committee report relative to Revo Casino Host Community Agreement. On a vote of three to one, the FOP committee recommends that the city manager be authorized to do all things necessary to execute a standard agreement for host communities with Revo Casino and Social House Keene, and to accept and expend the funds.
And Counselor Powers for a motion.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move to carry out the intent of the committee report.
Seconded by Counselor Remy. Counselor Powers for the committee.
Thank you, Your Honor. I probably will turn this over to the manager. She brought forward to the committee an opportunity for the city to have some income as a result of some changes in the state law, and the fact that we have a casino in the city. Every community that has a state-authorized casino in it has an opportunity to sign on to a partnership where we would receive a portion of the revenue that comes through it during the year. Many of the groups that we support with efforts and work in the city, school programs, any number of things, are doing the same thing, and this now gives an opportunity for the host community to have some income to offset whatever amount of services are required when you have an organization that has a business that revolves around people movement all the time. With that, the manager can talk a little bit about all the little intricacies that we should be aware of, and I think is well spelled out in this agreement. Thank you.
I guess I'd like to then recognize the city manager.
Sure. So the law changed last year to allow host communities to sign a standard agreement with casinos located in their town or city, and basically, the standard agreement would allow a percentage of the revenues generated during a week, and for Revo Casino, that week for host communities is in December. It goes from December 17th to the 26th, and what typically then would happen, the percentage of funds that would be transferred to the city would be similar to that, that would be transferred to a nonprofit whom may sign up at another time during the year. We've seen from other nonprofits, it's been typically between $16,000 to $20,000, but that's really just an estimate, because it depends on the activity during that period of time. The standard agreement only says that the host community must be eligible to receive gaming revenue, the host community must comply with all applicable laws and regulations, and the host community will provide the following insurance if applicable, and it's not applicable in this case, so there aren't additional requirements on the city to sign the standard agreement. This came to me from two city councilors who saw this on WMUR, Councilor Filio and Councilor Favelis, both saw an article on WMUR, because we weren't aware of this opportunity until then, and so if the council decides to move forward, I would execute the agreement, and then we would come back to FOP to determine how the funds would be used.
Thank you. Counselor Roberts.
I was the one person that voted against this. I had some real ethical concerns. I have, it goes all the way back to, up to the state. The state says, hey, we're going to have a lottery. It was built to help, the first in the nation to help education. What did they do? Yes, they took the lottery, which was done, bought, tickets were mostly bought by working class or poor people, and then used the money from the lottery to displace the money it was supposed to be sending to education. Now we're in a situation, hey, the city can say, yes, we may get $25,000 or $30,000, which might do a penny on the tax return, but again, if you go look at the casino where I, it's where I work, I see it two days a week, and I see about quarter to 12 when the parking lot is filled up. There are no high rollers there. There are a lot of older people there, and when you look at it, when they're spending money in the casino, and most of them are losing money, that is money that's coming out of the cash registers of local businesses, because people can only spend money in one place. You can lose it in the casino and not spend it in the local economy, or you can do it in the local economy and work on your quality. I just, I personally, and some of the people I've talked to, just really have an ethical problem with us taking money from a casino that is taking money from our citizens. So in a certain way, we are putting, we have made the casino a second, the middleman to take money from our residents to give it to us. So a roundabout tax, no different than the lottery.
So Counselor Favelis, then Counselor Greenwald.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I intend to vote in support of the committee recommendation here. I want to touch on a couple of different points. First of all, and I typically don't, you know, address some of the things that float around out on social media, in this case, I want to be clear, this is not authorizing an additional casino in Keene, this is not locking us into a long-term contract that we're going to start funding everybody's salaries and pensions with, and what happens if the casino leaves. We're talking about, you know, $16,000, $20,000, and an environment where every little bit that we're not collecting through property taxes is helpful for us, and helpful for our community. So I just, I want to set the record straight about some of the misinformation that's out there. I also want to reiterate the point that I made at committee, which is that the casino is here. Tonight, the vote is not about whether we should have the casino, whether we should continue to have the casino, whether we either should have had the casino. It's not a referendum, at least as far as I'm concerned, and I encourage the council to view this the same way, it's not a referendum on the morality of gambling, or the ethics of the casino and lottery industry. This is a recognition on the part of the state that there is a burden, to one extent or another, that hosting a charitable gaming facility places on a host community, and this is a way to offset that burden a little bit. So I will repeat what I said at FOP. The negatives that come along with casinos are here in Keene, no matter what. The question for us is, do we try to get a little bit of a positive return on them, and I hope the council will join me in answering that question with a yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Greenwald.
I'm going to agree with what Counselor Roberts said. I've been to the casino, I'm not anti-casino, so I just say it by disclosure. It's a good casino. Good operation, and it's clean. The folks that are there, it is not a high-roller casino, but that's fine, this is Keene, we're not a high-roller town either. My problem with the casino is a little different. As the casino is planning to be moving from where it is to another location, there's a lot of permitting that goes on, a lot of planning boards, zoning, and, you know, whatnot on building permits. It really doesn't look good to me to be accepting money from the people that we are permitting. You know, the expression, can't buy my love? Usually, I'm all looking for money for the city, and, you know, it would be great, perhaps when they're in and we're done with the permitting process and they're built, I'll feel differently, but now, no way. It's a really bad, bad look.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Williams?
Just to say that I concur with what Counselor Roberts and Greenwald have said, and I do not like the structure of how we would be getting money out of the casino. I think if we are to raise money from the casino, the appropriate thing to do would be for the state to give us the ability to tax the casino's revenue. Instead, you know, we've got this really kind of bunker system where we get two weeks or whatever. I do not, I do not favor taking casino money.
Thank you, Counselor Filio.
Thank you. Counselor Favelis about the casino money. I mean, is it perfect? I guess not, but if we're going to do an ethical and morality question about, you know, where the money's coming from, I guess that means we're going to have to tell the state, we're going to reject money from alcohol sales. Just call the state and tell them, we don't want your money. Ethics, ethics. We'd rather raise property taxes on the ethics. We don't want money from the state lottery, no, ethics, we're going to raise property taxes. We don't want money from the rooms and meals tax either, because, you know, there's a lot of people eating unhealthy out there, and those ethics, we don't want to take the money from you either. And the casino, yeah, ethics, yeah, we don't want to take, we'd rather raise property taxes than take all this money from you unethical people. If you're going to talk morality and ethics, grab your morality bucket and throw them in, and take which ones you want, because nothing's perfect, but I'll tell you one thing that's not perfect, and that's property taxes. From a state that downshifts all the cost responsibility on us, which they're doing again this year, you're going to say no to money to offset the property taxes? Think twice.
Counselor Hutz.
Thank you, Your Honor. Going back to Counselor Greenwald's point, this is fraught with peril. Boy, if there's a place that corruption lives, it's where things like this happen, where something that could come before us for permission to do something, for change in location, for different borders, different curb cuts, whatever, and then we're taking money from them because it's what their charitable obligation is? No, we can't do that. That's terrible. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Madison.
Thank you, Your Honor. My concerns are similar to Counselor Greenwald's. I'm not really going to pontificate about the morality of gambling, like, I have no problem with that. I'm not a gambling man myself, but I have no problem with the casino being here, with folks who want to go and spend their money there. That's your business, and people should be free to do with their money as they see that. My concern, like Counselor Greenwald stated, is that right now, we are in a regulatory capacity over the casino. They are a regulated entity as far as the city is concerned, and my concern is that, is with the optics of how it looks with us having authority over them in a regulatory capacity, taking money from them that is voluntarily given to the city, as opposed to something like a fee or a tax, something of that nature which they're required to pay. It's a little messy, and working as a regulator myself, it doesn't really work, so it's kind of where I stand on it.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Remy.
Thank you, Judge. Just a quick question. If the city that they're in wants to do one, wants to have dates, do they have to give them to the city that they're in, or do they get to go through a selection process like they do for other nonprofits?
No, they have to reserve time for the city. Now, Revo Casino reserves that time in December for all of their casinos, but if a city wants to participate, they do need to.
Thank you. That just, for me, takes away some of the piece of the moral, like, the money changing hands, if they do this, this is just part of the deal. Next year, we get the same thing, whether we vote yes or no on any planning board stuff. That's why, for me, it cleans that up a little bit. Thank you.
Okay, I think we've heard from those that wished to be heard, and so, just as a hand vote, all those in favor of the manager having the authority to enter into the agreement, say, raise your hand. Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. We've got eight in favor, it looks to me, but those opposed. Seven, Counselor Greenwald. Yeah, keep your hands up, please. And who said we don't have eight to seven votes?
Anyone want to reconsider?
Motion carries. Okay, we move on, I kind of, before I recognize the manager for her report, I do want to state for the record, when it was stated that we have not had significant input from people in the city, I want to reassure the council and people who provided that input, that I received quite a bit of input, both through the mayor's portal on the city website, through my phone number that is posted apparently someplace on the city website, and so my cell phone received many. I did happen to call some of those where there was a text and a name left, and I am surprised at how many of those were not within Keene. Most were in the state of New Hampshire, but outside of Keene, one came from the state of Maine, but some came from the city. And I, as we might have been suggested during the debate, that it is something for us to take a look, maybe we form, and I will talk with the committee chairs, is it worth forming a discipline committee for the purpose of looking at a 2013 resolution that hasn't been looked at or implemented since 2013? And should we try to update it? For one, I felt as a complainant, compromised in offering testimony that furthered the testimony that I had provided as part of my complaint, and that is my reason for not having entered into that discussion at that time. So, anyway, I just wanted to offer that I didn't want to just diss the communications that I received. I don't think that influenced the outcome in the debate, but, for the record. Manager?
Yes, thank you. So just a few announcements for you this evening. If you haven't seen today, there was an announcement about our dry conditions and forecasted low humidity and winds in our area, and that the fire danger is high. So as a result, all burn permits and open burning and consumer fireworks discharged in the city of Keene is suspended beginning today until further notice, and the fire department does a good job at keeping that updated on their website, so if you want to check in, the high fire danger banner will be removed when it's safe to resume burning. Also, I've been asked a couple of times about our water supply. Many of the communities around us have been experiencing a drought that has affected their community's water supply. In Keene, we have been fortunate not to reach the level required to trigger any restrictions. We currently have about 180 days of city consumption in our surface reservoirs. However, we have noticed a significant drop in groundwater at aquifer elevations, and so mixing groundwater in during the summer months helps with maintaining high-quality water, so over the next couple of months, they'll be monitoring this closely, and you'll hear more if we do enter into some sort of an advisory. It would first be a voluntary reduction in use of water. Next, I want to just remind everyone, there was an email, that email invitation from the fire department, it's, they are engaging in a strategic planning effort, and they have a session on Monday, September 29th, at 6:00 PM at the Keene Public Library, where they will be taking input from the community, and hopefully from councilors who are able to attend. They've engaged Emergency Services Consulting International, which is a firm that specializes in strategic planning for fire and emergency services. This group will facilitate a process with staff and community partners to develop a three-to-five-year strategic plan to guide the department's priorities, operations, and investment decisions. I am aware that several councilors have a conflict that evening, and so to ensure that there will be full council involvement in this important effort, any recommended plan will be presented at a council committee for further discussion and involvement, because this is very important. We've talked a lot about the staffing issues at the fire department, what we've been seeing in terms of EMS in our region, and so... And so, going through this effort to come up with a three to five-year plan is something worthwhile. And so, if you can't make the session, there'll be opportunity later at the council committee. Also, just wanted to note that Fire Prevention Week is coming up. It's October 5th through the 11th. The council has been invited to participate in the annual parade, which is Sunday, October 5th at 1:00 PM. It's rain or shine. It's going to go on regardless. And there's also on October 9th, an annual inspection dinner at Central Station. I know this is something that everybody looks forward to. But please be sure to RSVP to the fire department so that they have enough food prepared for everyone. And dinner will be served promptly at 6:00 PM. Counselor Powers has canceled the FOP meeting for that evening so that everyone has an opportunity to attend. And also, just a quick update related to Cheshire Medical Center. The subdivision of 62 Maple Ave is current, that's currently owned by the Cheshire Medical Center, will be making its way through the process of subdivision in October, November. As you will remember, the recent payment in lieu of tax agreement with the hospital was executed and it included just over one acre, 1.24 acres at 62 Maple to be transferred to the city for the potential future home of the West Keene Fire Department. So, you'll start to see that move, that process through the planning department in October and November. That's it for me.
Very good. We're going to move on to item G1.
A Joint Planning Board PLD Committee Report Relative to Ordinance O 2025-28A Relating to Zone Change for Five Properties on Pearl Street and Winchester Street. At their meeting of September 8th, 2025, the planning board voted unanimously that Ordinance O 2025-28A was consistent with the 2010 master plan. Further, on a unanimous vote, the PLD committee requests the mayor set a public hearing on Ordinance O 2025-28A.
So, the change in the script here for this evening says that we have a communication from the petitioner to the Community Development Department that he would like this item to go back to the Joint PLD Planning Board Committee and not set a public hearing at this time. Were you all aware of this or?
I am, Your Honor.
You are? Good. Manager is as well, and I'm catching up. So, I will refer this then back to the joint committee for further consideration. Moving on to reports on more time. I'm going to speed this along. We've got two that are requests for consideration of an ordinance relating to muscling of dogs and another that's relating to the social district question on the 2025 municipal election ballot. More time was requested and more time is granted to both items. Moving on to ordinances for the first reading.
A memorandum from the Public Works Director accompanying Ordinance O 2025-33 and Ordinance Relating to Rules for the Operation of Bicycles.
And we'll refer that first reading ordinance to the Municipal Services Committee.
A PLD Committee Report Relating to Amendments to the Land Development Code to Encourage Housing Development in Keene. Our vote of two to two, the PLD committee failed to recommend the adoption of Ordinance O 2025-15A. O 2025-15A and Ordinance Relating to Amendments to the Land Development Code to Encourage Housing Development in Keene.
Okay, I'd like to, we will file that report. And I'd like to recognize Counselor Bosley to lead us through this item.
Great, thank you, Your Honor. So, to start us off, I'm going to move to adopt Ordinance O-2025-15A.
Seconded. Seconded by Counselor Jones, and so.
Okay, so bear with me, guys, because this one needs a little bit of time to explain and go through some of the details. This came out of the committee, a two to two vote. Just to give you an idea, that there was some response to the public hearing that was held previously to this ordinance, going back to PLD. I want to go through, at that public hearing, we only talked about or we only heard public comment on one of the items that were proposed changes inside this ordinance. So, I just want to make it clear what this ordinance would actually do. There's several items in here. The first one is a simple housekeeping change to add the words residential uses to the neighborhood business district to clarify how the current zone appears on the ground today. The second amendment in this ordinance amends the lot areas in the neighborhood business district from 8,000 to 5,000 to make most of the lots in that zone conform, which are not currently conforming. Accompanying that change would be a change to the side setbacks and the rear setbacks. And we're going to hear about this word a lot tonight. So, just feel free at some point to ask questions if you need to. There is a distinction between setbacks and build-two zones. We're going to talk about that a lot later. But a build-two zone is where the property needs to be built in, where a setback is where a property needs to be built away from. So, there were some amendments to the build-two zone. In order to be able, with a potential smaller lot size, to be able to encompass a decent-sized building and not to be creating tiny buildings on these smaller lots, these setbacks were adjusted. There was a section that referred to the potential for residential uses on the ground floor in the downtown edge, sorry, the downtown growth area. Downtown growth currently does not allow for residential on the first floor, but we chose to add residential units on the first floor behind tenable commercial space. And we used a change that we mimicked from the commercial zone. So, that language was consistent to give some opportunity for, to remain, the street facade to remain commercial, but to allow for additional residential potential. The last item, which I think is probably the, well, this is not the last item, but the last non-controversial item, that I think is probably the most important one that came out of this ordinance, is split zoning districts. There are several pieces of property in the community that have changed over time with the zoning map has not changed, but the lot lines have changed. And now, these lots have multiple zoning districts on them. And when a person comes to the Community Development Department to do work on that lot, they have to maintain the integrity of the zone in each section of their lot. They can't use that lot for one type of industry. So, I'm going to use, our example was the car wash on West Street, has three different zones and a part of their lot could not be used commercially. And so, the only thing that they could do with it was have a driveway access in it. So, it is a cumbersome process for people to try to find ways of developing any of these lots. So, this change would allow for the landowner, only in the instance that the law is not subdivisible, to be able to choose to adopt the zoning district that would be the highest and best use for them. And then, the last item is the controversial one. This is the one that PLD probably talked about most and was, we heard about most at the public hearing. And that is changing the medium-density district to be three units to six units by right. And I think that there, I'm just looking for my notes because I wrote some things down while we were, ah, here we go. So, I think that there is this perception that, that this, you know, we heard words at the public hearing like the ghettofication of the east side or the medium-density district. And as somebody who has their hand on the pulse of real estate, I can tell you that going from three units to six units is not as financially viable as you think it is. Once you get above four units, you're required to sprinkler. And there has to be a certain number of units in order to make that cost worthwhile to invest in that property. So, I don't think this is going to be this prolific thing that happens. It is something that we already allow under cottage courts. What this would do is only in an instance where you already had parking on site and you were not changing any exterior of the building, you could reconfigure the interior structures of your units. Probably, you're going to see most people go to four, is my assumption. Unfortunately, because it's gone through this whole process already, in order to amend that down to four, which I would be comfortable with at some point if this doesn't make it through muster tonight, I would have to bring this all the way back through the joint committee process and it would add several months. And I think it was felt that at PLD that the petitioner deserved to have a vote from everyone tonight. So, I think what we also heard was that we were targeting the medium-density district. And I cannot name all of the things that I have done in six years on PLD, but just to name a few. We have changed the rural district from five to two acres. We have changed the low-density district acreage sizes to, because we couldn't have the low-density district and the rural district similarly acreaged. We have added up to six stories of residential housing in the commercial zones. We have allowed for residential buildings behind tenable commercial spaces in those zones. We've created ordinances for conservation residential developments for rural areas and allowed for densification on those lots based on conservation. We've allowed for cottage courts, which allows densification based on the size of the units. We've allowed ADUs by right across the city. We've allowed them to be detached. I don't think anyone in this room is going to be put in a position where anyone can say that what we are doing is targeting a specific district. And I also know what's on more time at joint committee and I know that more changes are coming. It takes a lot of work to see the ship get turned. And we've been working on this since the pandemic. And we don't see this overabundance of development happening. We see some small projects popping up. Really excited to get to see our first cottage court, hopefully breaking ground that's of substantial size, hopefully breaking ground pretty soon. So, I just want to hopefully assure you that these changes aren't things that we need to be scared of and that you guys can all vote in favor.
Thank you, Counselor. I would call to your attention that there are like four or five letters in your packet from residents and I think all those letters are in opposition. Hopefully, you've seen those. Counselor Hoss.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. The one going from three to six units by right is the difficult one. The rest of this ordinance, most of it is really good. And my compliments to everybody involved for bringing it along so far. And we should move ahead with the rest of it. But this going from three to six is problematic. Now, we do need housing and this gets us, gets us in that direction. It's good to create small units in existing structures. We're using existing structures. You're not changing the footprint of an existing structure. You're just infilling it. So, you're improving the existing structure and you're making houses that are there right now better through the upgrades. The conversion is good. It invests in the community and it increases the tax base. There's all good things about doing this. The medium-density zone is, it's kind of a transition zone, I think of it as. I mean, one side of it is up against downtown. The other side of it is against high-density districts. The other side of it is against rural and low-density. So, it really is a transitional district. And if you look at the city GIS maps, you can see that on the lot sizes, on the building sizes. As you move out away from the center, it thins out a lot. And there'd be a lot of opening spaces with suitably large buildings on big enough lots to accept this kind of, this kind of change. But, but the problem is that this will happen without addressing all the issues that come around it. So, the first issue is, you know, when you convert a building into having six dwelling units by right, the obvious thing that goes in there, what we all see everywhere, I'm sorry, those are generalities, but short-term rentals. Now, we're working on a short-term rental ordinance. We're going to get there someday, but right now, we don't have any control over that. And short-term rentals do not address our housing issue. In fact, they work against increasing housing. Second is parking. We struggle with parking everywhere. Parking is a challenge. The code says you have to have six parking spots on site. Yeah, you can probably do that. But that's, the code says that's the minimum you can have on site. You can have more, but there's no maximum to the number of parking that can be. And if you don't have it on site, it's going to overflow into the neighborhoods or who knows where it's going to go. In fact, on the, on the perpious surfaces that we have to have. That's a challenge too. We haven't addressed that. We don't have controls around this to make that work. And trash management. Trash has to go somewheres. Six units are going to generate a lot more trash than three units. And we have controls over that by essentially saying that the trash must be handled well, that's the access to get to it and all. But the real control is enforcement. After, after it's underway and after it's installed and things are happening, we have to count on enforcement to keep the trash under control. And the same thing with parking. We have to count on enforcement to keep the parking under control. We don't want to do that. We want to design these things from the beginning to be able to accommodate their needs. Now, it's not that we can't do it. It's just that we don't have those rules and regulations written into the codes now to control that. It'd be great if that could happen, but we'll get there. Right now, there are other processes that can be used. We can use the cottage court overlay. There are some, several cottage courts underway. They're not coming that quickly, but they're coming. And the ship may be turning, that that's going to happen. I'm just not, I'm not comfortable with letting this go for by right. Let's have somebody build some of these, retrofit some of these big old mansions for six dwelling units and then show it as a showcase. Let's see how well it works in these neighborhoods without changing the character of the neighborhood overall. So, is a motion appropriate at this point?
If you are wanting to offer an amendment, otherwise, we have a motion on the floor.
Yeah, no, I'd like to amend the motion on the floor that we delete item 3.2. A from this ordinance.
Second.
Your Honor, I think we need to ask the attorney.
Well, we have a motion and the second came from where? The amendment, I'm sorry, from Counselor Roberts. Thank you. And Counselor Bosley would like to address.
I would just like to ask the attorney if that's something that can, we can, we can't do that here without a public hearing, being heard on the full ordinance. And what would the process be to get, accomplish that?
Commander, please.
Thank you. Good question. Doing a material change to the ordinance at this point, you would basically be introducing a new ordinance that needs to go through the process again. You, I probably for efficiency would recommend that you refer back to the joint committee with this conversation appended to it so that they can workshop a new ordinance. At this point, you cannot amend the ordinance and then vote on it. Effectively, it's a whole new ordinance at that point.
Counselor Hoss.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I think most of the rest of the ordinance has been acceptable to PLD, to joint committee. And if we got it, put it back through the process, yeah, we have to go through the process again. But the bad things that could come out of having by, six units by right are worth going through the process again. And we'll get there.
Let me, sorry to interrupt you, but I wanted to clarify this. Are you wishing to withdraw your amendment?
No.
I think, I think we may have to rule that the amendment.
Oh, all right, I'm sorry.
Is out of our.
I'd withdraw my amendment on advice of counsel.
Would the second agree to withdrawing that? Counselor Roberts?
Yes.
But then I'd offer the amendment to send it back to joint committee.
Second.
Okay, now, there's an amendment. All right, we've got a lineup, but I'll let Counselor Bosley address this and then go down the line here, okay?
I just want to address some of the points that Counselor Hoss made in his reasonings for sending this back. The committee decided that we wanted to give the petitioner an opportunity to find out how we felt about this ordinance. But I think that the term by right is getting misconstrued with. But I think that the term "by right" is getting misconstrued with "without oversight." And that is not what that means. When we say "by right," it means that the.
All right, hold on.
Sorry.
I'm just going to practice.
When we say "by right," that means that the homeowner can go into the community development department and apply for permits to move forward with the process. But there will still be code enforcement. There will still be plan reviews. There will still be fire inspections. There will still be oversight of the entire project from start to finish. If that property has four parking spots and they need five parking spots, that triggers a planning board review that would include the neighbors. There's so, there's going to be a ton of oversight, and I think that people are getting really caught up in that term. So I'm not going to vote for the amendment because I feel like the petitioner deserves to get a decision tonight, one way or another. And we're really close to the end of the year. And if we don't, it doesn't end up in the direction that they would be happy with. The staff can take the parts that they like, or the petitioner can reapply in January to, with an amended version.
Thank you. Counselor Tobin.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify. This was, I thought Counselor Haas said downtown transition, but I thought here it said downtown growth.
He's talking, it's downtown growth, but he's talking about the medium-density district.
Okay, not the transition. Because I, okay, thought I heard downtown transition. Sorry.
Okay. Counselor Remy. Counselor Madison, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Mayor. The, I'm in support of leaving the six in there. I, as someone, I do live in medium-density. Medium-density is not only on the east side. I know that it's primarily there. Or there's a lot of it there, but it is in other zones as well. I just, yeah, to the point of what Counselor Haas was making about there not being, you know, permeable surfaces and parking requirements and things like that, there are. And within the LDC, that is the core function of the LDC. I've been on the planning board since I started on council in 2020. It's a lot of what we review to make sure that that stuff's all checked off. There are screening requirements to make sure things are done well. So to Counselor Bozley's point, just saying that it's allowed by right just means that they don't need to go to the zoning board to get a special exception to allow them to do this. It means that they can go, put in an application and file an own process. They don't need to go some special process. Still a ton of oversight. Trust me, those meetings can be painful, even for ones you think should be simple. So I, I agree. And part of our housing needs analysis, we also are seeing that fewer and fewer people are living in big family homes, right? It's, the average household is like two people now. It's not six. So having smaller units is a good thing for us. So I'm in favor of putting it as it is.
Counselor Madison.
Thank you, Your Honor. I own a house and live in the medium-density district. About a block north of mine, still in the medium-density district, are two separate properties on the corner of Spruce and I want to say Armory. Those two properties are kind of like this. Each one of those properties is six units. So you've basically got 12 units on a corner. The problems Counselor Haas has mentioned that would come from these properties are nonexistent. I am not seeing that. I live in the rural district. That is where I live. I spend my nights there. I spend my days, well, I spend my days on the road at work. But I spend a lot of my time there. I do not see these problems happening. This is, from the problems that I'm hearing that would arise from having six units by right in the medium-density district are the same exact problems and issues that folks said would happen in the rural district, that folks said would happen in the low-density district, that folks said would happen from ADUs, that folks said would happen from cottage courts. They're just the same arguments rehashed over and over and over again that, oh, my God, we have more houses. This is going to bring about the apocalypse, and society's going to crumble. Well, I mean, sure, society's crumbling, but it's not crumbling because of that. Like, it's just, I'm, I'm growing really tired of it. And frankly, I've learned one thing from being on the council. There are two universal truths here. Everyone wants more housing. No one wants it anywhere near them. It needs to be near someone else. As Counselor Bozley has mentioned, we've brought, we've brought housing ordinances to the rural district, to the low-density, and now the medium district. I live in the medium district. I'll say it again. I live in the medium district. I have two six-unit apartment buildings just a block north of me. The issues that I've heard that will come as a result of this, I have not seen them in the 10-plus years I have been there. That's just a fact. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Williams, did you wish to speak? No. Counselor Favelis, no? Okay, all right. I'm just checking the hands that I had seen Counselor Haas for one more time.
And Terma Michael. Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, just to clarify, I wasn't talking about the downtown transition district. I was talking about the idea of the medium-density district being a transitional area. So as it goes from the inner parts of our city to the perimeters of our city, to the rural and to the low-density. Yeah, it's true, and I think a lot of the people in those areas are looking forward to development and understand that it has to come, that it's going to come. But rather than just hand it to staff reviews and code reviews and the planning board, we want to see some stepwise movement here where we can see example properties. And I'll look at the properties you're mentioning, Counselor Madison. But we have to picture how they would fit with buildings on Lincoln Street, on, back in Castle Street neighborhood, Leverett Street, Wilbur Street, Roxbury Street here and there, big old mansions that get fit out from the inside. Thank you.
Okay. I think people have heard a hearty debate. Counselor Remy.
Just clarifying what a yes and a no vote means on this, if you could.
Okay. So the yes on the amendment here is to refer this back to the joint committee. So that's the yes. The no is that we proceed with the main motion for approval. Counselor Favelis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think an additional procedural question. I'm thinking of the last time that we sent something back through the process in this way was related to charitable gaming facilities and that zoning piece. I do recall us making an amendment on the floor and then sending it back. So is there a specific instruction here with, is it to re-refer to committee with the instruction to delete this part of it? That's how I understand it based on the conversation. I recognize that the joint committee can tinker around with other parts of it, and I understand we'll append this, but I'm just, when the motion is written here and then shows up in the packet for joint committee, will it be just re-referred?
Recognize amendment.
Thank you for the question. You folks being the final decider will be the last hurdle for the ordinance to get through. So there's incentive below to get it where you want it to be. That said, you don't have the authority to direct them how to amend it or what to do other than you do give the final approval. So what the practice has been is you'll send it back with what it is you're looking for, for a change, and then they will workshop it and send it back and see if it satisfies what you're looking for.
So if, if I might, if a person, if, if Counselor felt that rather than six, a four would be a better number, I mean, that's the kind of thing that we're not amending this evening. It would have to go back to, so that a public hearing could be set if the planning board agreed with some amendment that changed that number.
Yes, the practice would be to send it back with basically enough direction for them to know what the council's looking for by consensus. So if everyone here talked about the number four and said that's what they're looking for, that would be a clear signal to the joint committee.
I'm just trying to sift through Counselor Haas's points today. I think that was, anyway, that was introduced as a possible future discussion should, should you adopt the amendment. Okay, are we clear on the amendment to send it back to the joint committee? Okay. This is going to take a roll call. Joint, no? Committee, no? Ordinance, second reading? Oh, it's just an amendment. I'm sorry. Okay. Not on the amendment. All those in favor of sending this back to the committee amendment? Okay, we have three, four, five. Five? You got five?
Missing one. Alphalia.
All those opposed to amending this? Three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 10. Which counts for everybody. Motion is defeated, five to 10. We are moving on back to the main motion. And everybody understanding the scope of the main motion, seeing no further debate.
This will be a roll call.
This is a roll call. So would you please call a roll?
Counselor Bozley.
Yes.
Counselor Tobin.
Yes.
Counselor Remy.
Yes.
Counselor Filio.
No.
Counselor Williams.
Yes.
Counselor Haas.
No.
Counselor Jones.
No.
Counselor Madison.
Yes.
Counselor Roberts.
Yeah, no.
Counselor Favelis.
No.
Counselor Lake.
Yes.
Counselor Workman.
Yes.
Counselor Chadbourne.
No.
Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Counselor Greenwald.
No.
That's a different party.
I think you score.
Eight to seven.
Eight, eight in favor? Motion carries eight to seven.
No, go talk to the board. Two people.
Moving on.
Next, we have a PLD committee report relating to amendments to definitions of the Land Development Code to Encourage Housing Development in Keene and the definitions relating to charitable gaming facilities. On a vote of four to zero, the PLD committee recommends accepting ordinance O-202517 as informational. O-202517, an ordinance relating to amendments to definitions of Land Development Code to Encourage Housing Development in Keene and the definitions relating to charitable gaming facilities.
I'd like to recognize Counselor Bozley.
So I'm going to preemptively offer a little bit of context and then make a motion. This came out of the committee as informational, but it's an ordinance, so we need to have a vote up or down on this. So I'm going to move to adopt ordinance O-2025-17.
Second. Second, and my Counselor Jones, please continue.
Yes, so now that I've moved that, I'm going to ask you to not, to vote no. Okay? Not vote no, but just vote no. So not to mince my words here. So this is an ordinance that had, it was a companion ordinance to ordinance 15. When ordinance 15 became 15A, this ordinance became outdated. So the definitions in this ordinance don't apply anymore. We don't need to see it follow its sister ordinance. We need to see it be defeated tonight. So I'm hoping you guys will all vote no. Just not, I'm not used to saying that.
Any further conversation? Thank you. All those in favor?
Roll call.
Oh, roll call, yes. Please call a roll.
Thank you. Counselor Bozley.
I, no.
Counselor Tobin.
No.
Counselor Remy.
He bailed.
We'll come back to him.
Counselor Filio.
No.
Counselor Williams.
No.
Counselor Haas.
No.
Counselor Jones.
No.
Counselor Madison.
No.
Counselor Roberts.
No.
Counselor Favelis.
No.
Counselor Lake.
No.
Counselor Workman.
No.
Counselor Chadbourne.
No.
Counselor Powers.
No.
Counselor Greenwald.
No.
Motion's defeated. Does anybody else need a quick break? Counselor Powers, move on. You're good. All right. J three. I, I may bail. Please, go on with your, yeah, please.
A PLD committee report relating to setbacks and build two dimensions. On a vote of four to zero, the PLD committee recommends the adoption of ordinance O-202528. O-202528 relating to setbacks and build two dimensions.
I'd like to recognize Counselor Bozley.
Move to adopt ordinance O-2025-20-A.
Please continue.
Is there, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so I'm just going to continue on. I have, all right, I have my notes here. I put my glasses on so I can read all this to you guys tonight. So this ordinance is relating to build two zones, and we started to discuss this earlier. Our code was very confusing in regards to build two zones. The terms setback and build two zone were used interchangeably in different places to refer to the same expectation. And it created some interpretations that weren't very clear. So what this ordinance does is it separates the terms for build two zone and setback, and it creates some very clear rules around the build two zone. Our preference is that with this ordinance, and it's stated clearly that the principal building is built in the build two zone. But if the build two zone already has a structure or if that the lot might allow for multiple buildings to be built on it, they can't, the original interpretation was that they all had to have a piece of them in the build two zone. And so this allows for accessory structures or additional structures, even additional principal structures to be built at the rear of the property behind a principal structure that's already in that zone. As an example, we had a property owner that has a very large lamb-chopped lot, and there's already a house in the front of that lot, but it has a driveway that gives you access to the rear of the lot, and no further development could be had on that lot because that zone required property to be built in the build two zone. So this alleviates some of that restriction and gives some more freedom to individuals who are trying to increase the viability of their property.
Are there any questions? It's a coup d'etat. Are there any questions? Say none, none. You ready to vote? Say again.
Let's vote.
Yeah.
Roll call vote. Counselor Bozley.
Yes.
Counselor Tobin.
Yes.
Counselor Remy.
Yes.
Counselor Filio.
Yes.
Counselor Williams.
Yes.
Counselor Haas.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor Madison.
Yes.
Counselor Roberts.
Yes.
Counselor Favelis.
Yes.
Counselor Lake.
Yes.
Counselor Workman.
Yes.
Counselor Chadbourne. Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Counselor Greenwald.
Yes. Next item is item J four relating to definitions for accessory structure setbacks and build two dimensions.
A PLD committee report relating to definitions for accessory structures setbacks and build two dimensions. On a vote of four to zero, the PLD committee recommends the adoption of ordinance O-202521A relating to setbacks, relating to definitions for accessory structure setbacks and build two dimensions.
Thank you, Counselor Bozley.
Move to adopt ordinance O-2025-21-A.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Tell us about it.
So this is the companion ordinance, like our previous, like our previous conversation where we had an ordinance with companion definitions. These are the definitions that go along with our build two zone. The definitions clear up build two zone setback, principal structures, and it cleans it up throughout our code.
Where are we? J three or four?
We're done.
J three, task unanimously.
Well done, guys. Okay.
Call the roll.
No further comment. Oh, Counselor Remy.
Just one, just for the purpose of the record, I want to acknowledge that we, as a group unanimously, by consensus, appointed Counselor Greenwald to be chair pro temp for a couple items.
I'm glad you did that. You legitimized my absence.
The coup.
Thank you. And you're, and you're filling in. Thank you very much, Counselor. All right. We are ready for a vote on J four.
Counselor Bosley.
Yes.
Counselor Tobin.
Yes.
Counselor Remy.
Yes.
Counselor Filio.
Yes.
Counselor Williams.
Yes.
Counselor Haas.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor Madison.
Yes.
Counselor Roberts.
Yes.
Counselor Favelis.
Yes.
Counselor Lake.
Yes.
Counselor Workman.
Yes.
Counselor Chadbourne.
Yes.
Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Counselor Greenwald.
Yes.
Motion carries. And we move on to J five.
A PLD committee report relating to Land Development Code fee updates. On a vote of four to zero, the PLD committee recommends the adoption of ordinance O-202525, O-202525 relating to Land Development Code fee updates.
So at the request of the PLD committee, there's a copy of this ordinance on your desk showing the old fee schedule with an updated fees. And I'll look to Counselor Bosley for a motion.
Move to adopt ordinance O-2025-25.
Second.
Second by Counselor Jones. Counselor Bosley.
So the fee schedule that you have on your desk was just to help, we had discussed it at PLD, didn't necessarily need to make it all the way here, but we would like to, we always like to see red line versions of things, and we, it helps us be able to identify where all the changes happened. Inside this ordinance, staff had gone to other communities to research what other communities were charging for fees to see if our fees were in line and appropriate. We increased our ZBA fee, our CUP, flat rate fee, our telecom fee, our cottage court application fee, and our earth excavation permit fees, and these all were reasonable compared to other municipalities of similar or larger sizes. So I think that they're very fair.
Okay, is there any debate on the amendments as presented? Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just to make it very clear, and I did clarify with the city manager that these funds go into the general fund. They don't directly support the fourth floor. If we don't pass this, the taxpayers are picking up the burden on this, so I recommend we pass these fees.
Thank you. Any further comments? Seeing none, would the clerk call a roll?
Counselor Bosley.
Yes.
Counselor Tobin.
Yes.
Counselor Remy.
Yes.
Counselor Filio.
Yes.
Counselor Williams.
Yes.
Counselor Haas.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor Madison.
Yes.
Counselor Roberts.
Yes.
Counselor Favelis.
Yes.
Counselor Lake.
Yes.
Counselor Workman.
Yes.
Counselor Chadbourne. Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Counselor Greenwald.
If motion carries. Move on to J six.
J six, a PLD committee report relating to Land Development Code application procedures. On a vote of four to zero, the PLD committee recommends the adoption of ordinance O-202526 relating to Land Development Code application procedures.
And Counselor Bosley for a motion.
Move to adopt ordinance O-2025-26.
Second.
Second by Counselor Jones. Counselor Bosley.
So this is another cleanup organization ordinance. This is to identify what bodies will be overseeing different permit processes. These are, the changes that I wanted to note are the HDC will go before council. Appeals of zoning written interpretations will go to the ZBA. CUPs will go to planning, earth excavation, and street access for new additions. And the only other item to be noted is that our noticing requirements are updated, and we're changing the requirement from a certified piece of mail to a certificate of mailing, which is to help neighbors be able to receive their mail in a more timely fashion because we're getting feedback from the community that when notices are going out, that they're receiving them the day before hearings. And so this is hopefully to alleviate some of the burden of that process and get information into people's hands sooner.
So we've got in our packet, page 138, which.
The chart.
Which details, yeah, has the chart.
And the bold items are new.
Thank you. Folks have hopefully reviewed these. And looks like you're ready to vote. Would the clerk call a roll?
Counselor Bosley.
Yes.
Counselor Tobin.
Yes.
Counselor Remy.
Yes.
Counselor Filio.
Yes.
Counselor Williams.
Yes.
Counselor Haas.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor Madison.
Yes.
Counselor Roberts.
Yes.
Counselor Favelis.
Yes.
Counselor Lake.
Yes.
Counselor Workman.
Yes.
Counselor Chadbourne. Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Counselor Greenwald.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. We'll move on to resolutions.
The next three resolutions, there was a Scrivener error identified which omitted the accounts the funds are coming from. The resolutions before you this evening have been corrected. The first of these is K one, an FOP committee report relating to the appropriation of funds for the local match for the Marlboro Street and Cheshire Rail Trail Improvements Project, NHDOT number 42515. On a vote of four to zero, the FOP committee recommends the adoption of resolution R-202528 relating to the appropriation of funds for the local match for the Marlboro Street and Cheshire Rail Trail Improvements Project, NHDOT number 42515.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize Counselor Powers for a motion.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd move for the adoption of resolution 202528. Second.
Second by Counselor Remy. Counselor Powers.
Most of these next few discussions you've heard before, and you've seen come up where we've had to make some changes. A, because of no bids. B, because the bid comes in with a price higher. And C, we had to renegotiate or redesign to fit into our budgetary constraints. In this case, we're now at a point where we have the price, and we're ready to move along. It's federally funded. The price increases have delayed it. The additional funds from the feds have been increased to cover. And this increase is coming from the unallocated general fund balance just to help with our 20% portion of this project. Recommend that be approved. Thank you.
And, might I ask Counselor Powers, the, that it came in under the revised funding available doesn't require any, we would have had that problem had it come in at $600,000 higher, right? I guess my point is that we will spend the full grant. And the full amount that's being suggested tonight.
Yeah, we actually got an additional $1 million.
Right, right.
We had to go back and ask for more money, and this is our 20% match for that additional $1 million.
Right, so that 1.2 million plus the $600,000 reduction in the specification and bid leads us to a point where this project can be taken for the resources available.
Correct.
There you go. Any further conversation? Okay, the clerk call a roll.
Counselor Bosley.
Yes.
Counselor Tobin.
Yes.
Counselor Remy.
Yes.
Counselor Filio.
Yes.
Counselor Williams.
Yes.
Counselor Haas.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor Madison.
Yes.
Counselor Roberts.
Yes.
Counselor Favelis.
Yes.
Counselor Lake.
Yes.
Counselor Workman.
Yes.
Counselor Chadbourne.
Yes.
Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Counselor Greenwald.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. K two.
K two, an FOP committee report relating to the appropriation of additional funds for fiscal year '26 water infrastructure pavement repairs. On a vote of four to zero, the FOP committee recommend the adoption of resolution R-202529 with the adjustment that the funding is coming from the water fund on an allocated fund balance. R-202529 relating to the appropriation of additional funds for fiscal year '26 water for tru-, excuse me, infrastructure pavement repairs.
Counselor Powers for a motion.
Thank you, Your Honor, move for the adoption of resolution 202529. Second.
Second by Counselor Remy. Counselor Powers.
This is a case of, this is not new money. This is a case of us moving some money from the unallocated water sewer fund to the water pavement repair operating budget in the amount of $35,000. It's a result of this really summer and early fall, it's not been good to the water pipes. And at least two of them were major construction projects by the time they get done because the area that was affected, the pavement road was just, it made it a major project. Because once you have something like that happens and you start disturbing the earth, you can't just push it back in. So we got it covered and got people able to travel those roads. Had to go back at a later date, pull out all the material, get it back in there and repave it so that you had a decent road. So hoping that there won't be many more, this amount of money that's being asked to be moved around ought to cover the routine needs over the course of the rest of the budget. We recommend for the adoption. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further conversation? I should have mentioned on the last vote, these, because it's the use of reserves, require a two-thirds vote on the roll call. Would the clerk please call the roll on this motion?
Counselor Bosley.
Yes.
Counselor Tobin.
Yes.
Counselor Remy.
Yes.
Counselor Filio.
Yes.
Counselor Williams.
Yes.
Counselor Haas.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor Madison.
Yes.
Counselor Roberts.
Yes.
Counselor Favelis.
Yes.
Counselor Lake.
Yes.
Counselor Workman.
Yes.
Counselor Chadbourne. Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Counselor Greenwald.
Yes.
The resolution is adopted. Moving on to K three.
An FOP committee report relating to the appropriation of funds for fiscal year '26 sewer main lining project. On a vote of four to zero, the finance organi- I'm sorry, the FOP committee recommends the adoption of resolution R-202530 relating to appropriation of funds for fiscal year '26 sewer main lining project.
Counselor Powers for the motion.
Thank you, Your Honor, move for the adoption of resolution 202530. Second.
Second by Counselor Remy. Counselor Powers.
Thank you, Your Honor. This project's been planned for several, it's been in the planning process for several years, and it got to the point where we're at execution and began the project and moving along very well for such a large, large project. But there were some areas of the pipe that were found that needed to be replaced. It just could not be lined. So this proposal is to move $225,000 from the unexpected fund balance into the project so we can continue and we can finish this up in this particular year versus waiting until 2028 to have the entire project completed. It's still, it's still moving on, and it's moving very, very well, so let's, let's get it done here. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any questions for Counsel Powers or the manager? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Counselor Bosley.
Yes.
Counselor Tobin.
Yes.
Counselor Remy.
Yes.
Counselor Filio.
Yes.
Counselor Williams.
Yes.
Counselor Haas.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor Madison.
Yes.
Counselor Roberts.
Yes.
Counselor Favelis.
Yes.
Counselor Lake.
Yes.
Counselor Workman.
Yes.
Counselor Chadbourne. Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Counselor Greenwald.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to K four.
May I have a statement for you to make?
Okay, yes. On this motion, we first will adopt the resolution. If that motion to adopt passes, we'll vote on the intent of the committee report, which effectively allows the city manager to negotiate and execute a contract. I'll recognize, have you read the motion?
A F, an FOP committee report relating to the appropriation of funds for the Keene Airport Solar Project. On a vote of four to zero, the FOP committee recommends the adoption of resolution R-202531. Further, the FOP committee recommends the city manager be authorized to do all things necessary to negotiate and execute a contract with Revision Energy for the construction of a solar farm at Keene Airport. Resolution R-202531 relating to the appropriation of funds for the Keene Airport Solar Project.
Counselor Powers for a motion to adopt.
Thank you, Your Honor, I move for the adoption of resolution 202531. Second.
Second by Counsel Remy. Counselor Powers.
This time of night, I don't think this, you really want to hear that it's exciting, but it is. And let's face it, this is going to be one of the biggest projects we've ever done. And it's all going to turn into a revenue source that will help us pay for it, and it will reduce the pollution we have. It'll bring us better, more steady electricity, and it'll give us an opportunity for some more development because we'll have readily available power sources in an area that we can do some construction down around the airport. It's on the airport. We're already on the airport with solar. It just makes sense to do this. The economics of it really sound pretty tough. Tough for most of us, $13 million project. However, it's just well put together. We have one of the best companies, Revision, working with us to bring this forward. They've been our partner in all the other projects we've done. The economics of it are, have been run by a number of folks. They will be run over and over again as we go to bond. Finance directors looked at it. My local finance man has looked at it, and it's, it's the thing to do. So as to the details, the manager will be able to detail it much better. But I think from a, from a layman's point of view and from paying the tax bill here, this is one of the better projects we would ever kind of vote on, so please support it.
I'm going to ask the manager, but I just, this is, because you usually get yardsticks on these kind of projects, and it's five and a half megawatts of power being generated in this project. It's truly a significant step.
Yeah, if you approve this this evening, it'll be one of the largest municipally-owned solar projects in New Hampshire. It is a very large project, and we are under a bit of a time crunch because we are trying to access a federal tax incentive. And in order to do that, we need to purchase 5% of the project before the end of December. That is a substantial benefit to us. If we meet the safe harbor provision, it, we will receive investment tax credit of $3.4 million. So that's a return of $3.4 million. We've not been able to do this in the past. The projects that we've done on our other buildings have been projects where we purchased power through a power purchase agreement, and so the investors have been receiving this tax credit. And this tax credit is going away, and so the timing of this is really important that we move forward now. And what this does with the $3.4 million returning to us in a year, it just helps to accelerate the positive cash flow and the buyback, the payback period for, for this project. the positive cash flow and the buyback, the payback period for, for this project. Now, this was a complicated project in that we looked at it a number of different ways. We looked at it without the tax credit, and we looked at it with the tax credit. Revision provided, updated numbers that I gave to all of you this evening is on your desk, which kind of goes through the cost of the project, and then the overall expected savings. Now, the, the revised copy that you have this, this evening shows with the tax credit, which is a 30% tax credit, but because we get non-taxable municipal bonds, we only receive 25.5%, so they did change that number, and they are projecting a 25-year net savings of 24 million dollars. Without the tax credit, they are projecting a 25-year net savings of, of just over 20 million dollars. So, either way, it's, it's cash positive really quickly. We had a separate entity look at this, Beacon Integrated Solutions, provided a review of, of Revision's numbers, and a more conservative estimate using different projections, and even with their projections, it's still an eight to 13 million dollar savings, and over 25 years, and, and they have a thirty, a forty-year period, but I always use the 25, because that's a realistic life of the project. Now, in these numbers, we have included replacement of, of parts that will be necessary midway through, and an, an O and M agreement with Revision or someone else to be able to maintain this project as we move forward. So, those have been included in the projections. Happy to answer any questions. The, this will be a net metering project, so we will be feeding it directly into the, the meter, and we will receive the benefit of not only the energy savings, but what's called RECs, and so there will be some additional revenue from that as well.
Beyond what?
Beyond the energy savings.
You just quoted.
No, they're included in that number.
Okay.
And I didn't talk a lot about the, the environmental savings, right? So, what we're doing for our environment, I did talk a little bit about this during the FOP meeting, but, you know, it's, it will offset over 6.5 million pounds of carbon dioxide equivalent annually every single year. So, this is a substantial project for us, and I'm really excited, and I'd love for be able, us, for us to be able to get that 3.4 million dollars back and, and meet the safe harboring provision.
Counselor Favelis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not a question, just a quick comment. I previously lived in a community that was kind of similarly situated to Keene in terms of size, and also had a small airport. That community pursued a project like this, and it has had great results, so even though I'm sometimes critical of this ask to make a big investment upfront for a long-term payoff, I have no concerns that this one is, is going to be successful, so I'll be running us up. Thank you.
Thank you, and I will add, this is property at the airport that really cannot be developed for anything else. There's restrictions on this property in terms of height, and so, really, this is the best use for these, this piece of property.
And we can achieve a 5% spend on this project by the end of this year?
Yes, yeah, so, I mean, we, if you approve this this evening, the city attorney has been looking at the contract that we will need to execute with Revision. In short order, we would need to execute that contract and provide a deposit. It is a substantial deposit in order for us to meet the 5%. We will be doing a deposit of 1 million dollars. We are able to do that in a short amount of time. I've had the finance director take a look at, just in our, our cash flow, of whether or not we could front this. We have, we have, we're expecting to go out to bond in January, which is when we would see the return of, of funds, but we feel confident we can accomplish it with what we have.
And so that 1 million essentially is against a divisor, total cost.
That's correct.
14 million.
Yes, yep.
Yeah, yeah, so there's the math for us. Okay, good, ready to vote? Please, would the clerk call the roll?
Counselor Bowlesley.
Yes.
Counselor Tobin.
Yes.
Counselor Remy.
Yes.
Counselor Filio.
Yes.
Counselor Williams.
Yes.
Counselor Haas.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor Madison.
Yes.
Counselor Roberts.
Yes.
Counselor Favelis.
Yes.
Counselor Lake.
Yes.
Counselor Workman.
Yes.
Counselor Chadborn.
Yes.
Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Counselor Greenwald.
Yes.
Thank you very much. That motion carries unanimously. This is, could be a strategy, we take a project that's been worked on for two years and move it to a, nearly a three-hour point in our meeting. I'd like to recognize Counselor Bowles.
I think we have a second motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, we're still on, never mind, moving to, we have a second motion, Counsel Powers.
I move to carry out the intent of the committee report.
Second.
Second by Counselor Remy. And, please, continue.
So, we're giving the manager authority to negotiate this contract, and she will, I know, I don't even have to say it, keep us posted all the way along, because it will draw a lot of interest. Thanks for your work on this.
Indeed.
Thank you. Also, to the airport director.
Thank you, Mr. Hickling. Okay, with, seeing no discussion, would the clerk please call the roll?
Counselor Bowlesley.
Yes.
Money, care report, no.
Discommit, huh, hands? Good enough, all those in favor. It's unanimous, thank you. Okay, moving on to K five. Yes, something that's taken two years and move it to the third hour of the meeting.
A PLD committee report relating to endorsement of the City of Keene 2025 Comprehensive Master Plan. On a vote of four to zero, the PLD committee recommends the adoption of our resolution R 2025-32 relating to endorsement of the City of Keene 2025 Comprehensive Master Plan.
Counselor Bowlesley for a motion.
Move to adopt resolution R dash two zero two five dash three two.
Second.
Second by Counselor Jones. Counselor Bowles.
So, I do not want to confuse everyone at this hour. This is not the adoption of this plan. This is just an adoption of an endorsement. This is really, also, we discussed this at PLD, we received a presentation on the new master plan, and we really did not have an opportunity to make edits or changes or give our opinions. There will be a public hearing held at the planning board on September 29th. This is the planning board's document, this is not our document, so what I'm asking you for tonight is just to endorse the process and support the planning board more, moving forward.
The, the resolution is at the last page of the motion here, in case somebody would wish to take a look. Any comments? Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank the staff and the, the special committee which you, which you were on, for their 18 months of work and for their open and public ascertainment. I think it went well, and I have to throw in my, one, my, one last time, something since I've been asking for since I was on the committee that, that hired the consultant, and I was, also was on the master plan committee, and I, I said, kept saying, one thing we didn't have in our last master plan was implementation. This time, we have the matrix, we can check off the boxes as we actually accomplish that. We didn't, there were a lot of things we accomplished on our last plan, but we didn't recognize them, we didn't check off the boxes. So, I'm very happy that part is on there, I was, been asking for that from the very beginning, and this the last time I get to, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. It's well deserved, Counselor Jones. Indeed, the entire community development staff had to organize all of those up, public presentations and engagements, but I think to single out one person in particular, Mary Brunner, a big thank you to your coordination. Okay, motion is on the table, seeing no further discussion. Would the clerk please call the roll on the resolution?
Counselor Bowlesley.
Yes.
Counselor Tobin.
Yes.
Counselor Remy.
Yes.
Counselor Filio.
Yes.
Counselor Williams.
Yes.
Counselor Haas.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor Madison.
Yes.
Counselor Roberts.
Yes.
Counselor Favelis.
Yes.
Counselor Lake.
Yes.
Counselor Workman.
Yes.
Counselor Chadborn.
Yes.
Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Counselor Greenwald.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. We have a couple tabled items in your packet, just for you to, with the adoption of resolution 2025-30, we are now able to remove from the table for FOP report relating to the sewer main lining project, and would the clerk please read the report into the record?
An FOP committee report relative to the execution of a change order with in situ form for additional scope of construction services as part of the sewer main lining project. On a vote, on a vote of four to zero, the FOP committee recommends that the city manager be authorized to do all things necessary to execute a project change order with in situ form technologies as part of the sewer main lining project 32M I 0425 in the amount of 155,200 dollars.
I'd like to recognize Counselor Powers for a motion.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to, move to carry out the intent of the committee report.
Second.
Second by Counselor Remy. Counselor Powers.
Well, we passed the money earlier this evening. We've actually looked at this project several times, or here on this floor and at FOP, so now we have the money, and we can have the changes adopted, we can, we can sign that agreement and keep on moving, so, that's it. It's going to really finish that project, we can scratch it off.
Thank you, Counselor. Any questions, comments? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Counselor Bowlesley.
Isn't this a use of dollars?
No.
Requires this?
It says roll.
Roll call.
Don't believe what you read.
So, just a hand vote. Okay, all those in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
And there'll be a non-public, sir.
There is no non-public. Prior to three hours, we are adjourned.